We'll go this way.
There's probably one.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, as a board, all five of us are elected to represent our entire community. And that consists of approximately 5,675 students, 816 staff members, and 35,726 community members. We use our mission and vision to guide us, and I'd like to start tonight's meeting with revisiting these. Our mission is to cultivate a culture of academic excellence through inclusion, inclusive and innovative learning opportunities for the whole child. And our vision is to empower all learners to reach their full potential in a globally competitive world. As we conduct our business tonight, I ask the board, the administration, and the community to do so in a respectful manner. Discussions are healthy, and while we may not always agree, I can assure you that each and every one of us is here to ensure that we are doing what is best for our students, staff, and for our community. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, which includes superintendents' agenda, items number 14 and 15, personnel consent agenda, 1E, 2HIJ, 3B, 5A, other Board of Education business items, 6.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter.
Dr. Steger.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant.
Aye. Agenda approved. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments from the board, additions, clarifications to the minutes that were?
I do, Mr. Ballant. I, and it may just be my memory, but if you go to the minutes on the bottom of page four of the minutes. Actually, the last two sentences. Mr. Lovell noted the difficulty of determining costs of the remaining components due to instability of the construction sector of the economy. No issues with that. Mr. Lewis noted. Mr. Lewis noted the challenges of fundraising as an additional job responsibility for the administration. No issues with that. The part I don't recall is the sentence that comes next, which was, "The board authorized the administration to seek assistance from a third party for fundraising." That's the sentence I don't recall us authorizing to seek. That authorization is not one I recall. The next sentence, Mr. Commerford noted, "Upcoming report from the Sycamore Advisory Commission regarding private funding that addresses this topic." No issue with that. So it's just the one sentence that stuck out to me, and if the rest of the board recalls that, I'm fine. I just did not recall us authorizing to seek assistance for a third party for fundraising.
I don't recall that either. I think I basically included that because I know we had the discussion, and I thought it was, and maybe authorizing is the incorrect word, but perhaps. I think that there was some discussion about just at least finding out if that might be an option. So, but I think if you want to strike that sentence from the minutes, I think that's fine.
I'm super excited that our Sycamore Advisory Commission is here, committee, which is the next sentence. I think I would feel better about the minutes if we just struck that a sentence from the minutes.
Okay.
I'm fine with that as well.
Okay. So, Mrs. Bitter, since you made the motion on this item, and Mrs. Weiss, since you seconded that, if you would just clarify that you're okay with the correction to that minutes.
Yes, I'm okay with clarifying that or taking that sentence out.
I agree, I'm okay with striking that sentence from the minutes.
Okay, if there's no other comments on the minutes, Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bitter. Aye. Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Commerford.
Aye.
Dr. Steger.
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Mrs. Weber, would you like to go over, please, the protocol for the meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Ballant, and thank you to all of you who are here at our meeting this evening, as well as those of you who are attending virtually. For those of you who are our virtual members of our audience, you can find our board agenda and addendum for this evening's meeting at our Sycamore Schools website under the Board of Education page. Once approved, the minutes that we just approved now will be posted under our Board of Education page as well. For those of you who are participating virtually and wish to participate in public participation, making a request to the board, please send those to our moderator this evening, Jeff Ray. His email address is rayj, R-A-Y-E-J, at sycamoreschools.org. I would also make you aware that while we do have the chat feature available within our virtual meeting, we ask that you use that only for technical difficulties. Please do not use that to make public comment or to ask to make public participation requests. With that, we will turn it over to the next item on the agenda.
Just prior to public participation, while it's great that we are here at Sims to have our meeting tonight, there's a lot of work that went on behind the scenes, especially from our tech person over there, Mr. Ray. So I would like to publicly thank him for carting all of the video equipment and computers and everything we need for this so that we could pull off this awesome tour and the Sims players. So, thank you, Mr. Ray. We do have one public participation. Ms. Smith, if you'd like to come up, please state your name and your address. I will remind you, per board policy, that you do have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you, President, and the rest of the board members and audience. Again, my name is Glenda A. Smith. I'm running for Hamilton County Juvenile Court Judge. I'm running because Hamilton County is 30 years behind the rest of the country and 20 years behind, 12 years behind the rest of Ohio in juvenile justice reforms that reduce juvenile violence, reduce racial and ethnic disparity, reduce racial profiling, and other positive benefits while keeping the community safe. One of the reforms that the rest of the country has grasped is to get rid of mandatory bind over. And right now, Ohio has House Bill 500, has been presented to the Ohio State Legislature to get rid of a mandatory bind over in juvenile courts. And my mandatory bind over is when a child commits certain crimes and probable cause is found, that child is automatically tried as an adult. Well, we know because of statistics that a child that commits that crime that is bound over is 36% more likely to commit another crime as opposed to a child who commits a similar offense that is kept in the juvenile system. So I would ask that you support that bill right to your legislator. Thank you, and thank you. This is a large school district. It's a lot of work, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ray, any other participation? Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Commerford for an introduction of our next topic, our presentation from the Sycamore Advisory Council.
Thank you, Mr. Ballant. As part of the Sycamore Advisory Commission, we meet monthly and have community members who are part of the Sycamore Advisory Commission do detailed research. We typically have the presentations to the board occur in the summer, but on March 7th, the, this group that's coming tonight presented the research and their findings from the alumni coordinator position for Sycamore Community Schools. I felt like it was, as all the advisory commission reports have been, very well done. But this one had an action requirement next to it. And as we talked through it in our agenda planning, felt like having this tonight as a presentation would allow us to move forward if the discussion would lead it to that. So I want to thank the group that's here, first and foremost, for the outstanding work you did on your research, and thank you for being here tonight to present your findings. We have community members and students, all part of the advisory commission. And so I would just like to highlight and thank those who serve on the advisory commission. And I have shared your presentation in advance with my fellow board members and looking forward to the dialogue tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us. I am Kate Pinkert, alumni class of 1991, with a future graduate in '25 and another one in '27.
I'm Ashley Worth Heiser. I'm an alumni class of '95. I have three children in the district, and I'm also a business owner in Montgomery.
Ashish Kotari, I have two children in a school district, and I value the connections that they have made and would like to see them continue them. They'll be class of '23 and '25.
Hi, I'm Amy Ackerman, class of '97, and I have a fourth grader and a second grader at Blue Ash, and another one that'll be coming up in another year and a half.
Hello, everyone. I am Lauren Anne Barnes. I am a soon-to-be alumni, class of 2022.
We thank you guys so much for your time, and we thank you for your appreciation to us. But we would not be where we are had it not been for the previous SAC projects that have done a lot of work. So we've built on top of what they've done. Next slide, please. Oh, all right. There we go. So our task was to determine the steps to move forward with purchasing an alumni tracking mechanism and developing alumni program. Through our conversation, through our work, reflecting on what had already been done, looking at what some of our competitors, if you will, have in place, we are proposing a change to that task, and instead it being hiring a development director to strengthen our alumni relations, look for ongoing opportunities for fundraising. Always an Aviator is a great time to start this off and to outline steps in moving forward so that we have a foundation. We are, as you will see through this, we are asking for board support financially to start with, with the goal of this person self-funding and raising the funds for their position, but also building a board of trustees so that it is one less thing for our awesome administrative team to deal with, as well as one less thing for you all to be responsible for, but really be a community thing, because that's the goal of it. We are Sycamore Community Schools. Next slide, please. In the previous presentations, our colleagues found all the different districts, Basin, Merrimont, Indian Hill, to name a few, that have already established something like this. We're missing this. We have three people on our committee that are alumni, and none of us had ever been asked for money until Always an Aviator campaign, and willing to support this great district beyond our taxes. But a challenge that we found is that connecting with the alumni after graduation. And yeah, we have Facebook, we have an amazing job that's been done with Ashwin and Saffa. But he has a full-time job, and he can only do so much. He is amazing and probably has cloned himself multiple times, but we need one dedicated person to do this work who can build the relationships, because it's not just about fundraising money. But how can we engage the community? One person shared in our work that the play was happening, the musical was happening in the winter, and people didn't know how to get tickets. Well, that would be a great place for this person to do not just seeking money, but building those relationships. So perhaps Twin Lakes can have a special show or various things to connect with everybody, that it's not just focused on the athletics of our district, but all the different interests. One of the greatest things about Sycamore is all the opportunities that kids have. Next slide, please.
Yeah. The recent campaign that we've heard so much about, the Always an Aviator campaign, which was really dedicated around the development efforts for the athletic program at the school, athletic facilities at the school, kind of broad highlighted the need for a position like this. We had different people stepping in to help out and raise the money, coordinate efforts with different parts of alumni associations or schools or different booster groups within the school district. So as we were evaluating the need, Sycamore has about 30,000-plus alumni, you know, give or take over the years, and a lot of them actually live in the district or close nearby and love to engage with the district. And just to give you kind of a perspective, that apart from the Always an Aviator campaign, mostly what the school district hears about when it has come to fundraising is a Tag Day that SBOP has held for several years or years and years, if I can remember right. But most fundraising ends with the group that is involved in. It is not broad. They all tap into the resources they are limited to, but it's not through the entire base of alumni that is available to us. And it's a valuable resource. Just to put, you know, just fundraising in itself, if you have 4,000 alumni contribute $25, it gives us $100,000 fund, you know, even without doing much work. So that just to kind of give you what a power of 30,000 alumni can do, it's pretty significant. I would want Lauren to cover the next bullet, because she talks about the desire for what this position can do for us.
Yes, so as Mr. She's just mentioned, of course, aside from the longstanding fan base, I guess, that we have of Sycamore alumni, students who are currently graduating and who have just previously graduated very recently are definitely interested in seeing what Sycamore is up to. Not only does Always an Aviator campaign provide just the reason for people to come and see the new facilities, new fields and everything like that, but long-lasting relationships really are made ninth grade through 12th grade, and even for people like me who've been here since kindergarten and can come back and see Sims like this. So it's definitely not going to go away, and if anything, it's just going to grow. So alumni events and just conversations to be held with alumni are definitely needed and are definitely wanted. I can say that in a couple of months, maybe even next year around this time, when I'm going to be coming off a string break or coming off of my final second semester of freshman year of college, I'm definitely going to come home, and I live two minutes away from the high school. So to know that there will be some type of organization or something set up to where I can easily contact some sort of touch of Sycamore would definitely be really helpful for me and definitely greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Lauren. And more importantly, more than the students, the opportunity is to facilitate community connections, relations, right? So in a way, as we could have this roster of alumni available to us, we could socialize that to our, you know, long-term alumni as future internship offerings and other alumni meet and greets, you know, whether it's the homecoming or, you know, at a convocation to come and invite somebody who's been successful in whatever field, create mentorship opportunities. So that alumni position is not just a position of administrative in nature. It is more of a community relations as well as alumni relations. So it goes beyond, it's much wider than just singular focused. You know, the focus of Saffa can, did serve a purpose, but this gives it more broader reach and continuity with its ability to focus on it full-time. I'll hand it over to Kate to take over the next slide.
So our thought is that it has a threefold opportunity. Alumni relations, keeping everybody connected. Many of us have chosen to come back and live in this area and raise our children, but many people are all across the country and across the world. And Facebook's great, but it'd be a lot greater if it were connected within something within our district. Community involvement, a way to get that 70% who don't have kids in Sycamore connected with our district, connected with what's going on, cheerleading our district on, as well as building that fundraising shell. It's awesome, all the buildings that we're growing and the athletic components, but money is always going to be an issue. And if we have a system that's already set up to support us so that you're not constantly having to go back to the taxpayers, go back to, oh, where can we cut? How can we slim things down? But something that's supporting all the great things that are happening here, it stabilizes us as a district. We've included a sample development director job description. Obviously, HR will have to adopt this within our parameters, but just some of the key things that would be essential for this person to do. We are saying the salary would probably be around $100,000 because we want expertise. We want somebody who's going to do this right, who's going to be able to fund themselves in two years. That person will need to come in, and there will be some additional cost with that in what type of program they want to use. There's so many different kinds. We started going down that rabbit hole and threw up the white flag and said whoever's hired in this position is going to have the expertise that none of us do for that.
As we think about next steps, we presented to the SAC committee in March and had thought maybe we could get on the agenda for May or June, and cannot thank you enough for seeing this as a priority and getting us in so quickly. You know, tonight we're here because we want to share with you this proposal, and what we're asking for is a salary of around $100,000, just based on kind of what we're seeing out there, to get that level of expertise, of course. In addition to that, there would be benefits, and then there probably would be some other costs associated with it. Once we bring in the expert who could really evaluate the database that we currently have, I think then that person will have a better idea of how much it might cost to expand on the database or explore other options. So we don't have those figures, but those would be the additional costs that we foresee. And then, as previously said, we hope that this position or the intention is to make it self-funded over the next two years, and we'd get going on recruiting and hiring right away to have the person in place over the summer, and by fall, really get going and starting to build those relationships, especially with the senior class and current high school students, you know, in preparation of them graduating. And the reason that, you know, establishing this program is really important, and why we're kind of thinking that two-year frame is we do think it's possible to self-fund in that time through fundraising efforts, just even looking at what we've done with Always an Aviator. I mean, you know, it's not going to take much to get this person up and running, and we know the levy is important and that two-year timeframe is a critical timeframe for that. And so that's why that would be a goal of this person, to come in, establish the program and get it up and running, and really see where we would take this. And in the future, potentially establishing a foundation with its own board. I mean, really, kind of, sky's the limit. We could see that this could grow legs, but just need to get, you know, a true expert in this field in here and get started. And just to, you know, in conclusion, we hope this is compelling enough already, but just to share a couple of experiences, three of us as alumni have worked on planning reunions before, and in doing so, literally, this old school. But get out the yearbook and search line by line, you know, for Facebook. And without a database and without a contact person to go to at the high school, it made that much more difficult. And we certainly want, you know, alumni to be involved in those types of events. Also, you know, I didn't move away for a period of time, so understand that connection of people not in Cincinnati. But, you know, Always an Aviator has been super impactful, and that's the first time, and I hate to say 25 years, that I've been asked for money besides Tag Day. And so, and even with that, you kind of expect the bands coming around in the fall, and we know to expect it. And so it'd be great to do that for Sycamore-wide programs. You know, I'm somebody, I was very involved in high school, and so coming back to the area, knew I wanted to get involved, and, you know, went out and, you know, I seek opportunities to get involved, but not everybody does that. And, you know, I'm in HR, would be happy to talk about careers, helping to plan the fourth grade celebration for Blue Ash, and found out, you know, the person that's going to design the logo is an alumni and a graphic designer. And the only reason we know her is because she kept in touch with her music teacher. So, you know, those types of things, it's not just money, it's time. And there are a lot of people that will seek to stay involved or get involved, but there are a lot of people that won't. Yet, if asked, would be, it'd be a pretty easy yes. And so lots of opportunity with this position and where it could go in keeping both alumni and the community involved in the school system. So, thank you.
I have one question. When you talk to other school districts that have done this, was the two years a realistic timeframe that they saw? Like, did they all get to self-funding within two years, or do you know how many of them did?
We took that information from previous reports, so I can't say for sure. But what we looked at and what we're looking towards them using, it should be very reasonable. Our goal, honestly, would be sooner than that, but.
Great, thank you.
And then thinking about that salary and thinking about just even the Always an Aviator effort, we do think that it's realistic, because if you start to ask and you do the math on that $30,000 that we have, you know, 100 sounds like a lot, but it doesn't take that many home calls to get to that number.
And I believe Indian Hill went that route a couple of years ago when they instituted that program. They created a self-funding, but they brought in the foundation under it, and they redesigned the structure. But essentially, they did fund it for the initial period of time.
Great, thank you.
One other thought, too, and transparency with that $100,000. And if someone's coming in and knows that that's their goal, I think they'll work towards that to make sure that that happens.
I have a question. I apologize. I just want to make sure when you address and answer the questions, if you could please speak into the microphone so that the people who are participating virtually can hear you.
Sorry.
So you, I read through your presentation, and I enjoyed listening to you, and thank you very much for doing all this hard work to come here today. My question is, development director versus foundation? So this would be a position that the school district would be hiring and paying for. And I understand the foundation part, but are there school districts, public school districts, that you're aware of that hire a development director from the district that raises money for a potential future foundation? Have you, did I, I may have missed that in what you said.
This model has been replicated in other districts, using the hired within the district and then moving towards a foundation. Yes.
And you, could you provide that, could you share some of that information with us? Not now, but maybe in the next time we talk, I just would like to learn a little bit about that as well. Thank you.
And I do want to clarify that I think in the appendix, we do share that the primary goal of the position, I would almost say 70% at onset, is to create outreach to our alumni. Fundraising is the remaining 30%, and over the two-year time period as the program launches, they become the focal point, but at no point fundraising would exceed 50% of their job responsibilities, so to say. But it is, the core objective of the position is to create that outreach and not. create that outreach and not go to our alumni for money. Uh, but create opportunities to welcome them back to the school district and enjoy, you know, what they were, what they, where they belong.
And I've, I've heard you guys a couple of times give this presentation. So I recall you talking about the success of this position and that hiring it through the district has been in your research more successful than trying to start it because there's no connection to the district. If it's not a part of the school district, then really at the beginning in the onset, there's no one to monitor it. If you, if it's not part of the school district.
And part of that too is building that relationship at the high school. I mean, we could even see this being housed at the high school to start with because that's where you're going to build those relationships and getting with the families and, and peripherating out from there, but really building in with that future alumni and creating those events. Another thing I wanted to add that we had talked about, many of the different sports teams do golf outings and for those of us who don't play golf, it'd be great to see some other opportunities. And so one of the things we were thinking this person could do is house that calendar of different ways that sports seek to raise money for their teams, but then also push them to do something different. So the baseball team, the football team and the lacrosse team aren't all doing golf outings, but sprinkle some other opportunities in there as well as making sure that the same opportunities are being added for things outside of sports.
Also a prior year, they looked at different school districts and how theirs were set up. And those are all referenced in other SAC presentations and every, I didn't reach out to those schools, but every time they come up, it's like, they're so happy to talk to us. So anyone that looks like a great way to start, I'm sure that district would be happy to talk more.
Can you tell me, and thank you all for coming tonight. And it's so amazing to me to see like alumni, like when three of you got up there and said that you were students here and now you want your families to go here. It's just, it's really heartwarming. Um, the, the funds that are raised in the, in the school districts that you profiled there, how does the funds that are raised work with the administration in terms of where those funds get spent?
That was not the focus of our project, but that would be something I think would be part of the charge for that person is to ideally coming from either Mr. Lewis or from you all identifying are they going to take over fundraising at a greater district level or hone it in smaller school by school? Or team by team, activity by activity. Um, but that was not a focus of what we were looking at.
Okay, thanks.
And just to add to that too, when we first started benchmarking, we were thinking of a lower salary and then we're encouraged to really think big. And in part is because we need to pay for that experience. And so someone hired for this role would have the experience in development, in creating these types of positions, in creating a foundation. Um, you know, and, and is more of an expert in this area than the research that we could do.
My question is, what would be the incentive structure for this individual coming in? Um, obviously you've got to cover your own, but are they going to then ultimately try to take a percentage every year of the funds raised? That's how a lot of nonprofits seem to do it with their foundations and funds.
We did not get into the weeds of the payment for that because we kind of, through our various conversations, felt like that's something for you all to decide. Um, we could definitely look into how other districts did that if you would like us to, but that is not something that we got into.
And one more thing I'd follow up, um, let's um, say thank you to Lauren Barnes, who's a senior and she's graduating. And I just found out she's going to UC and she's going to be a track and field athlete there in the fall. So if we can just clap for her, please. And if you don't, if you don't know Lauren, she's been a phenomenal friend, student, academic and athlete since I, we moved here in 2013. It's been nice to see her grow up and achieve at these levels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe just in an attempt to, to wrap up, um, the conversation. I wanted to say I was actually part of the Sycamore Advisory Commission when they did the benchmarking work and the study. So while it's there in, in the attachment, I had some firsthand uh, with the team that did that. And it was very compelling to me that the number of districts who did this, the majority that had success did have a district fund the first two years of the, the effort and then did become self-funding. I think this model makes sense to me when I think about the universities that have this type of a program and the number of our school districts that we benchmark with um, that have this type of a program. It struck me that Sycamore was missing something that many local school districts have and all, almost every university has something along this line. I think the proposal of, of the ask is, is somewhat, you know, capped here on a two-year, I think we will learn and go. I would, uh, I would be supportive. I really, I've been excited about the two other presentations that were related, the foundation presentation, which was two years ago, and then the, the benchmarking before that. I, I would be supportive of, of investing this money for the benefits that it's offering. I think the need is to me clear, this, the slide that shows the, the local school districts around us who have this when we do not, I think is um, compelling from a need standpoint to me. I see the benefit. Um, I think the investment is, you know, is no small amount. But I do think that investment will pay dividends over the future years if we get the right person in the role. So that's just my, my, my sentiment on this one. I, as far as next steps, we obviously don't have um, a proposal. But I, I, I guess I'd like to, to gauge with my fellow board members, would it be appropriate to ask the administration to put together the formal job description uh, for us as a next conversation on this?
I would, I would like to see that and also how a person, this position would fit into the administration, at least for the first couple of years, if we move to adopting a board of trustees for the foundation. I'd like to see and hear from Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Weber and Dr. Davis kind of how that might work.
We'll be happy to do that work. And just so that you get kind of the totality of what we would be talking about, it's not only a position, but we would be looking at, you heard them mention, you know, there's a database that needs to be set up and, and developed. So that would be the other, I would say, initial cost that we've discussed is, you know, all the successful networks have that ability to continually update that information. And really Lauren is going to be our test subject because we, that's one of those groups that we miss out on is that they immediately leave and they go out into the world and we miss out on that opportunity for when they come back at homecoming, when they come back, you know, on breaks, that we want them to feel a part of Sycamore and it's always their home that they can come back to and visit. So, but it's hard to get a hold of them. They change cell phone numbers, they adjust their emails, there's, but that's where that database would keep that information up to date and, you know, really accessible for us. So Lauren will lead that charge for the class of 2022. No pressure, Lauren, no pressure.
Mr. Commerford, I would like to um, follow up to what you just posed to us as board members. Um, my, I had, I, I see the need to, and I think it's a really great possibility for us and I, I'm really excited about it. My, my question, and I, I need to have this, I need to understand this is having a development director hired by our district and having a foundation are two very different things legally speaking. Um, in preparation for this, and I wasn't at the previous board meetings when this presentation was given. So I, I need to do some more research. I need to learn some more. And in preparation for this meeting, I did research through the Ohio School Board Association, the information that they presented on foundations and school boards and how some, many school districts have foundations and it's a great benefit. But they do that for a legal reason. There are some really significant legal aspects to raising money for a public school. And so that's what I just need to learn more about that. It may be that we don't go straight into hiring a development director. It may be that we need to go straight into planning for a foundation, but I think we at least, I, I need to know and understand that process. Maybe if other districts are, if there is a legal way that we can hire someone for two years and then turn it into a foundation, spend those two years to plan it. Okay, but I need to understand that legally. And I do think that's going to be an issue that we have to look at as, as a board. And maybe you already know the answer to that.
Yeah, we, and, and, and in the attached, there is a presentation that's more on the foundations and but clearly we want to answer all the questions before we make a commitment, that's for sure. What I would say is that the thing that when the foundation presentation came through, uh, whether it was two years or one year ago, I can't recall, but when it came through, we're leveraging this Greater Cincinnati Foundation as a part of the Always an Aviator. So there is a foundation structure that we're tapping into that's not associated directly with Sycamore, but we have that, I'll say fiscal capability before we create our own specific foundation. So the, the capabilities of a foundation exist and we did leverage them as we set up the Always an Aviator campaign. And Mrs. Weber, I'm just going to make sure I have, I've said that accurately, just if you could uh, comment.
Yeah, that's correct. I, the one thing that we would have to revisit with that arrangement is uh, when we initially set that up, it was really kind of tailored just to the uh, fundraising efforts around the athletic facilities. However, at any point in time, we could change that focus. And I think that was our intent when we initially set it up is that we knew we had this big uh, project in the beginning, but we knew that there were other areas within all, all of our schools that could benefit from that arrangement. Um, so I think that would just be more of a, a work of that group of the steering committee to get that focus changed as we saw those needs change. So I don't think that would be an issue at all.
And that's kind of how we saw it too. I mean, I know that wasn't the initial intention of Always an Aviator, but man, that tagline would be great to just continue to expand on it and, you know, keeping with the theme of a community, you know, Always an Aviator um, helps with the fundraising piece, but also that community component too.
Mr. Commerford, I think just based on what I heard you say, you know, we would never put any of the board members in a position to vote on something that we have not vetted, that we have not worked with our legal counsel and development. You know, there's going to be a lot of work. There's certainly, um, what I hear the board saying, it sounds like there's a lot of positive momentum for us to do that work and to bring that work back to you. And that's the work of myself and Mr. Lovell, Dr. Davis and Mrs. Weber and others in our district that will put that together and bring that package back forward. Obviously, we're not going to bring something at the next meeting if it's not ready. So I, I don't want to commit that we're going to be ready at about a two, a week and a half to two weeks with all the other work that we have to do uh, to close out this school year. But um, if I hear you correctly, you're interested in that proposal and we will get to work on that.
I just.
In between all the rest of our.
I just wanted to chime in. I need a little bit more information. I did, if you could share, you know, slides with, you know, public um, so we can see the background on this because I don't feel, I, I like the idea, but I need to understand how this all links together. As a structure, I guess is the way I would phrase it to you.
And that's exactly why we're here. This wasn't a voting thing. This was just a start to dialogue.
Yeah, I'm not quite comfortable with the idea of having um, a job description put out yet without understanding how this is going to be set up for its growth.
I, I think that, I think what I would like to say is that I want to thank the, the group that did this research and brought it forward. I think tasking them with additional follow-ups is probably not the right task, but if there is enough energy to answer the questions that, that have been raised, I think it would make sense if we asked um, Mr. Lewis to coordinate that from within the district. And then we can get our, you know, all of the information that we need to make an important decision.
That's totally agree with that. That's fair, yes.
And I, I think it's critically important that we thank you because you guys took really years of research and we've talked about this is we want to turn things into action-oriented items because we can do all the research we want, but until we actually put something into action, it's just research. And so I think you all did the task that we asked you to do, which is how do we take this and move this forward? So I enjoyed working with you. I enjoyed engaging with you. It's exciting to have soon-to-be-four alumni standing up there. Um, and Mrs. Rapp, thank you so much for your support of all the groups as the chairperson of the group because your leadership, you know, is huge of a group of forty to fifty people that come together monthly to do this work. So uh, we could not do this work and we certainly wouldn't have the time to do this research. And so you have gotten us to the point where thank you, and now we have to do the rest. And you can hold me accountable to it. So, and I, I will take your pressure every single week.
But before we go, I do want to add, answer one question that Mrs. Better had. And I don't want this to get bogged down because of a concern of a foundation, which was always meant to be a far-out future objective. The need now is to connect the dots, connect the alumni together, bring them uh, under a common platform. It is uh, currently a kind of a hodgepodge of groups that reach out, whether it is a drama or the music or sports. I'm part of the boosters and I see they are going through a fundraising effort of their own and the struggle is there, right? They're all going, they're all asking for money at different times. Uh, and maybe the same people over and over again. If we had a wider base, which was organized in one place, we could probably make a more concerted effort. And, you know, actually have, be more impactful for the school district for all its activities, not just athletics, but drama or what have you, or even, you know, our art show. And I'm sure people would love to come in if they knew about it. So.
We're hoping three times the charm.
Thank you.
Take the ball and go for the Super Bowl.
Thank you.
Well, Kate, I'm glad you mentioned the Super Bowl because if our students can raise eighteen thousand dollars in sixty minutes, we can certainly do better as a district. So thank you guys for your time.
Moving on to superintendent's agenda, Mr. Lewis.
I would be happily, uh, have, very happy to introduce Dr. Davis um, to have her come up and really share uh, just some quick updates of, you know, we do know that it is critically important for us and it has been a goal of this board um, and this team to really make sure that our, our staff members and our staff population reflect better on the numbers of students and the diversity of our student population that we have in this district. So you have talked about, you know, what are those numbers, what are those numbers currently look like and, and what would a goal look like and what would that mean for our district? So uh, without stealing any additional thunder from Dr. Davis, I will let her share about that topic. And uh, certainly we look forward to uh, the dialogue with you and answering any questions about our demographic data.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, board. Um, I was just sitting there thinking about the very first board meeting I attended and that was the one where I was hired and Mr. Commerford introduced himself and immediately gave me my first charge, which was getting the, the staff and student demographic data together. And so I am happy to present this information to you tonight. Um, Mr. Ray, you can advance the slide. And so the first slide you see is our student demographic data. I broke that down by building and this is the way that it is recorded in our EMIS system, which is our educational management information system. Okay.
Can I ask a question, two questions, Dr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, under Sims, we don't have anything in the mixed box. I don't know if that was just an oversight or we don't. And, and also can you define what that means?
For mixed, they have that listed as two or more races and there was no one who identified themselves as two or more races in that category. And so it was not an omission. There was no data in our system currently in that area. So the areas where you see there is nothing indicated, those are areas where those particular buildings did not have anyone self-identify in those categories.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Commerford, I'm hoping, um, if you can go back to the student, thank you. I did catch that error there. I apologize. It was the staff data that was there. And so that is the correct number of the students in that category. You can advance. And as we look at our staff demographic data, um, you can see that there is a huge disparity. Um, particularly as we look at um, certain schools, if you look at that percentage column, it is not meeting where our student data is. And as a district, there is about a twenty-seven percent difference in terms of what our staff demographics are as compared to our student demographic data. Okay, you can advance, please. And so as we're looking at this issue, first thing was to do was to gather that baseline data. I collected this data at the beginning of the year. So this is October data. And I'm also going to collect data at the end of the year so we can, as we're starting to look at that retention piece to see if we are having staff members who come in, who's leaving us and the reasons why. And so we will be conducting exit interviews to get that information as well. And then that root cause analysis, why does our data look this way? Is it because we do not have minority candidates applying? Is it because we have them applying, but we're not selecting them? Is it because of? Is it because of the tradition of the district is not to, and so they have chosen to go to other districts? And so looking at the root cause of that is to find out the why, so I can know how to approach the issue better. It's not just a matter of you've hired a minority and so now I've sent out the beacon and all the minorities are going to come. But finding out why does our data look this way? Because this was not something that happened overnight and it's not something that I'm going to be able to correct overnight as well.
Dr. Davis, can you, can you answer a question for me in terms of, are you also going to be looking at the hiring process within our district in terms of, you know, is it, let's say that there's a teacher needed in a certain building. Is a stack of resumes just given to the principal or is there something that needs to happen in the HR department ahead of time? What kind of process do we have? I mean, you don't have to go through that, but is that an area that we're going to look at to see if that's a process that needs to be examined and maybe corrected or changed?
One of the things that I have implemented this year and I'm looking to implement, because this is according to my first hiring season, is being very intentional in terms of looking at our applications. So the first thing we're looking for are the qualifications. And then from there, we're looking at that diversity pool. As you know, it is illegal to ask questions about race, religion, national origin, marital status, disability, et cetera. So to the extent possible, we try to determine if there are any of those candidates that we have moved forward based off of their credentials are of that minority status. And so there isn't any way, when I get a stack of resumes that I can see or stack of applications, because there's nothing identifying them other than looking through the information and seeing what type of organizations they are members of and things like that, if there are self identifying information, but there's not a box where I can check where I'm going to sort them by race or ethnicity, et cetera. And so it's, once we have those candidates, looking at the candidates who were qualified, who moved forward and presented them to the administrators of the ones that were minority, how many did we actually make an offer to and select? So that's the easiest way to do it without there being a way to separate candidates based off of any of those other characteristics. In terms of the active recruitment, going to different venues and trying to solicit more individuals of a diverse background. And so reaching out to different HBCUs in the area, we just went to some career fairs. I went to Central State just last Thursday. Prior to that, we were in the Cleveland area. And so reaching out to universities that we haven't gone to as much and then making those connections, even though there may not be many students there and we're not necessarily looking for first year students all the time, but making those connections with their alumni and having them give them here as well as student teachers. And so I have made some connections with some universities. If they have minority candidates, as we are accepting student teachers, send them our way. And that way we can get them acclimated to our district and give them a step in the right direction in terms of choosing Sycamore as their home. Okay. One thing I wanted to point out about that active recruitment is that I attended a meeting last Friday with ODE and ODHE. That's the Ohio Department of Higher Education. They are recognizing that they need to do things differently as well. Looking at the data in the state of Ohio, I believe they indicated that there's only a twenty-nine percent diversity rate of students who are entering educator programs. And so they are actively working to increase the educators and them who they're recruiting for the educator programs. And so that was very promising because as we're looking for candidates, if the pool is shallow, there's not much that we can do for that. And so I do appreciate ODE and ODHE for taking the ownership of that. The universities in the area who were there who spoke about the different programs that they have, Miami University, UC was there and Xavier. And so they are developing programs to increase their diversity of their educator pool. And then that data collection and tracking, if you can go to the next slide, Mr. Ray, thank you. And so as I said, this will be our first year of collecting that data. The data that you had before you was from October. I'm going to do some data collection at the end of the year also to see if there was any, as we're looking at the people who resigned, was it majority minorities who resigned and trying to find out the reasons why they're leaving us? And then collecting this data each year so we can see how our pool is changing and being able to track that information.
Can I ask you, it's kind of a sensitive question.
Sure.
What's Sycamore's reputation for hiring minority candidates?
When you say what is their reputation, the data would show you that it's not good. I, from the conversations that I have had, it's not been that Sycamore hires minorities. And so the data reflects that as well and trying to change that. And so that's in terms of doing that root cause analysis, trying to figure out exactly how prevalent is that reputation of the district? And what are some things that we can do to proactively change that? So people understand that the administration has changed and that Sycamore is changing their views on that. Keeping in mind that as much as the board and the administration wants to diversify our staff, there are people in the community who wanted to remain the same. And so while we're seeking to diversify our staff, we also need to put supports in place so that when we do diversify our staff, how are we supporting them? Because again, as much as we want to diversify our staff, there are others who are comfortable with things the way that they are and who may be resistant to that change.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Dr. Davis. A follow-up question. Do we have any data on other demographics besides race, religion, or I know we're not allowed to ask all these questions, but disability? For example, LGBTQ status, do we have any other information on diversity as well?
We don't report those to anyone.
Okay, not report. I guess what I'm saying is, is it possible that we can expand to include disability as well?
That is something that someone would self disclose. I cannot ask someone if they have a disability. And then with their protected information, if they disclose to me that they have a disability, I wouldn't be able to mark that on a chart that we have. So if you can
I guess what I mean is, how do you know the staff numbers that we have? How do we know those numbers? We ask, we ask them to self identify. We
We know those numbers because this is information we have to report to the state in our EMIS system. And so we track that information.
Okay. Do we track disability?
No, ma'am.
Okay. When we have hiring, for our hiring practices, are we, I'm, I'm asking because I've worked for an employer that asks us, asked, when I worked for my last employer, we were asked those questions. Would you like to self identify? You don't have to. But they ask those questions in the interview process. Do we do those sorts of things for other minority groups?
We do not. We don't ask any of those questions in interviews. All the information that I've received as it pertains to hiring, it's illegal to ask those things.
No, not in the hiring. I used to work for Cincinnati Children's Hospital, not in the hiring process. When we were, when we were employed, we were offered, we were allowed to self identify as having a disability or having a mental health issue or having or being LGBTQ. And my question is just, do we as a district do that in our hiring process?
Anyone is able to self identify if they have a disability in terms of receiving accommodations, et cetera. We do not ask anything about their sexual orientation. No, ma'am.
Quick question. When you're out recruiting at HBCUs, are you currently looking at undergraduate, graduate students, both? I'm just thinking of, you know, in terms of where they are in their process of education also. Are you looking toward juniors and seniors or their freshmen coming up and speaking with you? How is this, is there a way that we can possibly work with younger students coming into education to try to help them become the best educators they can?
When we attend job fairs, job fairs are organized by the university. They're not organized by us. And the students that they invite to the job fairs are generally seniors as well as alumni because they're trying to place their students who are graduating and alumnis who have not been already placed. So none of the job fairs that I have been at have been for the younger students because most of the employers are looking for someone they can employ now.
And I think you can hear, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Commerford. You were getting ready to dive in for a question. No, go ahead. This is board comments, so go ahead.
Dr. Davis, first and foremost, thank you for bringing this data to us. I think it's particularly important for us to, I think the data speaks for itself as in the opportunity that's in front of us.
Absolutely.
And I particularly like this last slide here that shows that we're going to do annual monitoring and see the trend. I mean, we need, what we need to do is know, are we moving this in a positive direction? Or are we getting, or, or no, is it, is it not improving or, you know, are we getting worse? And committing to do this on an annual basis, I think will be very helpful. I'm a firm believer that you get what you measure as a, as a principal. And I think it's important that we have this brought to the board on a frequent basis. And I guess part of my question was, are you proposing to do this twice a year to the board or once a year to the board with this type of a chart?
It, I will be collecting the information at the beginning and end of the school year. If you would like to see that at the beginning and the end, I have no problem presenting it to you. I was just collecting it. I had not decided how I was going to share that with you or the frequency of which I would share that with you.
I personally would love to see it twice a year for, for the simple reason, I think, and you mentioned this, which is, which I really appreciate the, my experience of, of diversity inclusion work at P and G is that there's two sides on this coin. There's the recruitment and then retention. And oftentimes we focus on recruitment and don't focus enough attention on the retention. And so I really do think spotting, and you, you talked about this in your root cause analysis of understanding where we have opportunities, I think we'll know at those two different points when we start the year and when we finish the year, it'll help us spot, I think, the, the opportunities. So my, my humble ask would be, I'd love to see this on a twice a year basis if we, if we could. And thank you.
You're welcome.
So I was just going to, Mr. Ball, are you going to jump in?
No, I was, I was just going to thank you. I, this is, this is, you know, in my seven years on the board, this is the first time we've really looked at any of this and presented it to the board. So I, I think that's very encouraging and look forward to the present, you know, to the data continuing. So thank you.
So my, my only final comment about this item was just the, the intentionality of, you can hear the intentionality of what we're working on and, and what our administrative team is working on together. But I want to be very clear because Dr. Davis and I talk about this frequently. You, you, we should not and will not start setting percentage goals or things like that because if you start just going out trying to hit percentages to meet goals, you're not going out and seeking out the best candidates. So when she's out recruiting, she's not, you know, she kind of said it, I'm not putting out the beacon of light and calling all minorities. I want the best candidates that we think are the best fit for our school district. So I think that's one of the components. And I will say in my ten years of being in the district, in my twenty-two years of being in education and the multiple years of being in administration, the toughest question I have ever been asked by someone who was hired in the district is, what are you going to do to support me in a predominantly white office? And how are you going to do that? And I was stumped. It was actually the interviewee asking me that as someone that was doing the interview and I was stumped. I didn't have an answer for that. So that's something that our team has worked hard on to figure out, how are we going to make people feel comfortable and want to come here? Because, you know, I will say that I don't know that it was a slam dunk to get the person that asked me that question to come here. And I think we were able to convince them that, hey, we're, we're a different leadership group and we're able to, she's smiling because she knows what I'm talking about. But it was the toughest question I've ever been asked. So I wasn't going to out you, but you added yourself. So. But I really appreciate, you know, that question and her challenging me and it challenged my leadership because it was not a question I have ever been asked before. So Dr. Davis, thank you again. As always, the work that you're doing, we appreciate you. And certainly we appreciate the attention that we're all giving this item so that our students feel most comfortable in our environments.
You're welcome. And as he said, we're looking for the best candidate. And though while I appreciate the concern and the interest in perhaps quantifying it with a number, our percentage, racial quotas were invalidated by the US Supreme Court in nineteen seventy-eight. And so that's not something I would be interested in doing is really finding that best candidate and going from there, hoping that we find diverse candidates that are still highly qualified and being able to offer them positions.
And, and I also just want to thank you. I appreciate this. I appreciate you doing this. I know that this is really important work. And it's sometimes it's challenging to take on something new for people, but I appreciate this a lot. And I do want to say that in addition to this, I hope that people will feel very welcome in our district. They will feel welcomed here. They'll feel like they're part of our, our community.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you very much, Dr. Davis. Mr. Lewis, healthy AIDS update.
So great news on the healthy AIDS front. Mr. Ray, if you go to the next slide. I, I don't think it's a huge surprise, but when no students are here during spring break, you have zero cases. But really what I would say, what you're going to see in all the data, and we'll go through it relatively quickly here. But really we removed masks on February seventh and the data trend since that date has been very positive. And so, you know, I know that this is still a high concern for some in our community and that is not lost on us. We will continue to support everyone in making their choice. If, if they would like to be optional, we certainly support them and, and we'll do everything we can to make them feel comfortable in our environment. But you will see, Mr. Ray, next slide, this was the week before spring break. We had two positive cases in the entire district for the week. We had one positive staff member and we had one person in quarantine for the week before spring break. The week preceding that, we had seven total positive cases, no positive staff. And again, just one student in quarantine for the entire district. And then you can see the week by week case numbers since we removed masks. The highest was obviously the week after, but we had twenty-two positive cases. And just to remind our community, I think Mr. Balance said it at the beginning of the meeting, fifty-six hundred and seventy-three students we've gone down to since you last quoted those numbers, but approximately. But fifty-six hundred and seventy-three students. So I feel like that's a, that's a really positive data trend point. And then you can see as we've gone down, you know, it's been pretty non-existent among our staff. And then, you know, most recently we've seen very few cases among our students. I know we did make an announcement that, you know, previously we had kept our facial coverings or masks on our students in our preschool area. I'm happy to report that we have not had a positive case in preschool since January, late January. So, you know, in keeping with, you know, the ability to be optional and allowing those families to make choices. You know, we did announce that starting next week, we would allow for that to be an optional environment. We do have a good number of students in those programs that are currently not wearing masks anyway for various reasons that I won't comment on just out of privacy reasons. But, you know, there are, and certainly preschoolers, as we all know, I've been in preschool a lot this year and I love my preschoolers. They're awesome when, you know, you see one rolling by you while you're sitting there trying to read. But, you know, they struggle sometimes just, you know, with the concept of, of keeping them on their faces. But overall, I really am pleased with the positive data trend. We have obviously experienced a lot of change from the state level. The state is now saying you no longer have to have a designated reporting person. You don't have to report positive cases. You, you basically don't have to have a coordinator that does that. I know Mrs. Spencer was excited about that, but we didn't get too excited because you'll see on the next slide why. We don't have to notify parents of positive cases, students or coaches, if of any, of any cases that are positive in our district. And we don't have to report cases to our local health department unless we are the ones testing them and they result in positive, which far as I know, we are not running any kind of testing program in our district other than, what's that? Just for test to play. So there you go. The next slide is what I was talking about. What was our response to those ODH changes? We're still in a mindset and we're still supporting the mask to stay, test to play protocols, which means our quarantine and isolation measures will stay the same, at least at this point. We will remain with our best practices where, you know, we're still doing enhanced cleaning. We still make sure hand washing is, and really what did we learn during the pandemic? Hand washing prevents a lot of illness, not just COVID. COVID reporting and tracking will remain in effect until the end of the year. So Mrs. Spencer did stop sending me daily updates because she said, how many times would you like to see a zero email? And I said, well, I don't know if I'd ever get not excited about seeing a zero email. But to the point, she needs to really focus in on other work. So we're trying to repurpose her time wisely. Certainly if we see any negative trends or any spikes in any of our situations, we will react. And we've, we've stayed committed to that. We've stayed steadfast in that. You know, we have a phenomenal team in our district that has really worked hard, really over the course of the entire pandemic to a Really over the course of the entire pandemic to address these situations and. I feel like we've made good decisions all along and will continue to react the same way that we have all throughout. So. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about our COVID protocols or. What we have done or any decisions that we made because, you know, I believe we've, we've continued to try to make good decisions that are supportive of all students in our district and. You know, really let the data tell us what to do. And I feel like we've been successful in doing that. So.
I have a question. You've, I'm just reading to you what I've sent you over email. So on 5th of February, 2022, you sent an email to preschool parents stating that mask use would be continued because preschoolers are not yet eligible for the vaccine. The preschoolers are in there. They're, half of them are going to be on IEPs by how it's set up. And also we have some children in there with special healthcare needs. Such as underlying health conditions and the fact that they're not vaccinated. Masking only works in these cases when the entire class is masked to protect those who cannot mask. As would be found in their IEPs. Can you help us understand the change in that? Decision because it was all based on vaccine status.
Well, as I stated during my report, there's been zero cases since January. So when there's no prevalence or no incidence. It is really tough to require our staff members and our students to maintain masking when there isn't anything present. So. Again, as I stated, we're happy to monitor those situations. If there were to be any increase, but I think it's important to point out, as I've stated, there are already students, you just said it doesn't work unless everyone is masked. There are already students that are not currently wearing masks in those programs.
But from the health parent point of view, the kids who can't mask need the other kids' masks so they can stay safe. That's how the masks actually work for them.
And, and, and that's your personal point and I appreciate you making it. But. You know, when I look at making these decisions, again, it's been focused on district data. What's the data in the program and, and making good decisions based on that data?
And then as another question under for Healthy Aves, what specific requests have been made? By families with students with special healthcare needs on homebound or who have gone out of district? To return safely to school and how are we going to use the SRID phones to get these kids back in school? I don't know if Stacy. Has any information on that or not, or if.
I'll just go ahead and answer it because we discussed this at the morning meeting. The last meeting, you asked this very similar question and, you know, our, our direction to all families that if. And we don't have that many families that are still out with special healthcare needs, but what our request of those families is to contact our Office of Student Services. And work through your IEP team to develop those plans. We can't make a general plan that covers every single student because every single student has different unique needs. So. That is why we have an IEP team. That's why they have a process that they work through and they need to utilize that process to make those decisions and. Mrs. Spencer and her team are charged with making those decisions in collaboration with the building principal. The teacher team and also the parents as part of that team.
So for families that went out of district, how are we going to contact them to bring them back in?
Well, they would need to contact the district and express their interest. If they're ready to come back to the district, we would welcome them with open arms.
Any additional questions from the board? Excuse me. I need a motion for the approval of Healthy Aves Protocol Decision Making Guidelines, Appendix A.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional comments from the board? We discussed this in our last meeting. Any additional comments before the board questions before we vote on Appendix A?
I have a couple of quick things. Um, I'm still having trouble taking this and being able to operationalize it. It seems a bit vague to, for the average citizen or even. The average board member to be able to figure out how these decisions are being made and I need to understand how we're going to remedy that. And I would also like to add. The following sentence under, under the vaccination status on, in levels one, two, and three, put another bullet point. That says, well, I typed up something. I'm not sure if this is what everyone would understand. I'm going to quote myself here. It's risk for severe illness for the school aged and staff population bracket, including but not limited to. Students and staff with special healthcare needs and bracket will be considered.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to comment similar to what I said last time. You know, throughout the whole pandemic, the guidance has changed frequently from government authorities, from healthcare officials. And I, I believe that a, a guideline or threshold for making decisions can't be specific. To where it's being changed every time something different comes out. For example, you know, we've been looking at hospitalization rates for a long time. Although the COVID percent of COVID positive patients in hospitals is very low right now, the number of hospital beds are still in the high, mid to high 90s. As far as occupied. So. You know, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Seeger, but I also think that this has to be universal and it has to allow. For things to be decided at the school level instead of making changes to a policy every time something changes in this pandemic or, or another one.
So you're saying that you don't think we should add in a risk for severe illness for school aged or staff population, including those with, but not limited to students with. And staff with special healthcare needs will be considered. You don't want that kind of sentence in there.
I was talking, the generalities of, of not being specific based, you, you said this was too vague. I was addressing.
Yes, that's because the feedback I've been getting from parents and families has been they cannot for the life of them understand how any decisions are being made. So I'm trying to help the general public understand.
So I, I guess I'm, I'm confused on what you're asking here. Are you asking for revision now to, to, to Appendix A?
This is the same thing that was presented at the last board meeting and I asked for revisions last time and I would like to see something. Slightly. More clear for the public.
Any additional comments from the board? Okay, then I will. Ask Mrs. Weber to please take a vote.
What are, what are we voting on?
We're voting on Appendix A as, as presented and as written.
Just let me confirm, Mrs. Bitter, you seconded the motion. Okay. Are you ready for the vote, Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Nay.
Mrs. Weiss?
No.
And Mr. Ball?
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the third reading of Policy EBEA, use of face coverings.
So moved.
Are you, do we have a? Flight on that? Any, you know, this is the third time we've now presented this to the board. Any changes, any comments on this before there's, there's a vote? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
No.
Mr. Ball?
No.
And Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Lewis, redistricting preschool discussion.
So normally when we're talking about redistricting, I can tell you that there are a lot of sleepless nights. There would be a lot of anxiety around redistricting, but the proposal, or at least the discussion that I have for you tonight. Is really just around trying to bring some additional balance to our elementaries. Due to the fact that we're relocating preschool as part of the master facility plan from Maple Dale to Sims. Why would we do that? Well, Maple Dale really, after the last redistricting has continued to grow. In enrollment and they just need a breath. So we're trying to, not only with the adjustment of moving the preschool, which would give them two additional classrooms. To use for their, their educational purposes within the building. We would be able to potentially just relocate a few additional students and really balance out our elementaries. As you know, part of the master facility plan, Sims Elementary is now the largest. The school, school, elementary school in our district. So. We need to make sure that when it's fully open, which it is now, but obviously you don't redistrict or move students in the middle of the year. You need to make sure that it's full and utilized. So certainly we want to make sure that that happens and we want to make sure that we have it done correctly. So. I'll just run you through the couple of minimal changes that we have. And certainly I want to say, when I say minimal, it's minimal in number. It's certainly not minimal to any of the families that we're moving. It's certainly not. I'm sure a positive impact because everyone loves their elementary school and they get very tied to the people that they work with and our elementary teachers do a fantastic job at all four buildings. Just creating a culture of family. Our administrators support that as well. So I felt that tonight watching the Sims players. A little girl was sitting in, in the line and she said, Mr. Lewis, I'm so nervous. And I said, it'll be okay. And I started dancing with her and she was like, we don't need you to dance, Mr. Lewis. And you're right, you don't. And then I came back around a second time and she gave me a huge hug and said, I'm not nervous anymore. And I said, well, that's because Mr. Lewis embarrassed himself in front of hundreds of people. So. But that's that family atmosphere that we try to get with our families and our students. So. So you can see on the, the screen there, Montgomery Town was previously a part of Montgomery Elementary. It was only moved because we needed to alleviate some stress in Montgomery Elementary. And if you remember, we moved a number of. I'll say different areas to Sims Elementary from Montgomery. We probably just maybe moved a few too many. So Montgomery really never fully recovered from that. So this would kind of provide some of that additional balance. So you can see Montgomery Town being the biggest one, which is 31. Creeks of Montgomery Orchard Club, Mayfair and Shakerdale are basically all on that stretch of Montgomery Road, right across from the hospital. They all go to Maple Dale. It actually makes better sense that they should be going to Montgomery just from a logistics standpoint, from the way we transport. The way we utilize our transportation and I'm sure the board's aware of this, but transportation rules a school district. So, you know, Mr. Miller and Mr. Huber. Mrs. Buchanan do a fantastic job routing the district and making these decisions. So. You know, besides our administrative team, they're directly responsible for providing this information to us. Certainly they had other aspirations for redistricting and other ways that we could be more efficient, but they were more. I would say intrusive and probably too much movement just to balance our elementary. So. The last one you see there moving, and so that whole group would move from Maple Dale to Montgomery. And then the other one you see there moving from Maple Dale to Montgomery is Hopewell Road. And it's basically the stretch, and I'll show you on a slide here in a moment, a picture of what that stretch is, but it's basically from Montgomery Road. Near the safety center where the police station and fire station is. Basically down to about the Indian Hill sign, you know, it kind of cuts off right there on Hopewell. So that's. You know, there's only one student that lives in there in that address range at this point. And then you can see the approach at Summit Park. It was originally moved and placed at Blue Ash. It actually. Logistically belongs in Maple Dale. So making that adjustment. So you can see at the bottom, the net change. The minus 31 for Sims, although they're getting. To addition, well, actually two additional preschools from Maple Dale. And then we're actually putting in two additional preschool classes here. That that will obviously offset that minus 31 pretty quickly. Blue Ash is at a minus seven, Maple Dale at minus 11, and then you see Montgomery at a plus 49. So we'll go to the next slide and show you just kind of what those areas look like, just so you have an idea of where they are. Montgomery Town is right there at 275 behind the BP. If you kind of are back in that area, it's to the right and going towards Cornell Road. Actually, there's an exit out onto Cornell Road right near the high school. So that's Montgomery Town. Next slide, please, Mr. Ray. And then you can see all the kind of congregation of where Orchard Club, Mayfair, Shakerdale. Kind of coming down from starting at the top of the slide, all the way down towards the hospital. Those are some of those areas. Again, much easier to just take them straight down Montgomery Road and go to Montgomery. With Montgomery Town and. Old Montgomery going in that same direction. Next slide, please. And then you can see that stretch of Hopewell. That red arrow is that last address. So you can kind of see the stretch of Hopewell that is there. Next slide, please. And then you can see that was a much older photo that Google has not updated because Summit Park doesn't look like that anymore, but that's about where it is. And next slide, please. Oh, and so not only in combination with, we, we needed to talk to you about redistricting. It was important that we talked to you about preschool planning as well. So.
Want to discuss redistrict.
Let's talk about redistricting before we move into preschool planning.
Just a clarification for myself. The approach at Summit is that the apartments and the houses up there, or is it one or which?
It is not the houses. It's just a, a complex right there at Summit Park. So.
Mr. Lewis, being a parent who went through redistricting earlier. I know that, you know, this is a very emotional topic for, for families. And although there's not a lot affected there. You know, there still are families and students that will be moving, potentially moving schools. Can you talk a little bit? I know we'll talk about this again in a couple of board meetings and allow the community to have input into it. But is there a communication plan so that the parents know that this is going to be discussed at, at board meetings or know that this is a possibility? Or what's the plan for that?
It's, it's actually planned and written to go out tomorrow. And we would never do this at one board meeting and then ask you to vote at the next board meeting. You know, we'll take as many subsequent meetings as we need to do this right. But right now, tentatively scheduled that we would have another discussion at a morning meeting. We would also bring it back at the evening meeting unless there were polarizing comments of reasons we should not move that. That's when we would ask you to vote, but it would give the, the community two additional opportunities to comment on it. Your point, Mr. Ball, at, at that time, when we redistricted a lot of those areas, we did a lot of intentional efforts to make those students feel welcome. To their new school and we will certainly do the same thing for any of our new school students that might switch schools because. The other thing that we did intentionally to make people feel welcome or to at least allow them to finish out their elementary years is if. If you are currently, let's say you're in third grade at Sims and you want to finish at Sims for fourth grade. Because, you know, let's say, you know, it's been a while since we've redistricted. So they would have been there their whole elementary career. And now you got to shift me to Montgomery for fourth grade. That'll certainly be an option that exists for families is that we would not provide you a bus to go. To Sims for fourth grade, but if you would like to choose to stay at Sims for fourth grade, we would make that option available. If you had a sibling that's in second grade and you're in third grade, but they would move up to fourth and third. We will allow them to stay with that sibling for that next year, but the following year, they would have to go to their homeschool. So. We will allow, you know, voice and choice and allow them to kind of make that best decision for their family. But. You know, after kind of a one-year stopgap, everybody would be shifted to their new school. So. Trying to be understanding of students that have been there at least most of their career before they would have to make a shift. But if they needed or desired transportation. We could not offer that with our assets and running across the district. We just wouldn't be able to accommodate that. I, I can tell you today, I spoke to Mr. Miller and today was a really tough day in Sycamore, but we were able to make it work and. Transport our field trips. The rain probably helped with a couple of those field trips, but. Just having the assets and having the drivers, we wouldn't be able to offer that. But again, I think you can hear the intentionality of our team. We will provide additional supports for our families that are affected by this change. But. I think I, my hope is that I can tell you, all of our elementaries are equitable and do a fantastic job of educating. So. They will not experience a difference, you know, moving from elementary to elementary, but I certainly understand the emotion of doing so.
I have one more quick question. What about the families who have chosen, say they're a Blue Ash family and they've chosen to go over to Maple Dale? Are we going to be reining them back into their base school also?
When you say a Blue Ash family that's chosen to go to Maple Dale.
Said.
So.
Yeah, interdistrict transfer.
It's a really great question. We, we actually, at the beginning of this school year, stopped. Really great question. We, we actually, at the beginning of this school year, stopped approving interdistrict transfer. And that was a discussion that we had with the board about just understanding, again, we're imbalancing our district on purpose. Because someone prefers or thinks that the education at this building is better than this building or anecdotally, they heard that. So we put a stop to that because there really is no good reason to do it. I will say the one, the one caveat to that is that, let's say that I'm a teacher at Maple Dale, but I live in Blue Ash. We are allowing staff members to be able to do that because they're handling their own transportation. As long as it doesn't create an imbalance. We're not going to hire another teacher because we have too much, you know, imbalance from one school to another. So Mr. Lovell and his team did a fantastic job. He worked collaboratively with the principals. To make that decision and to kind of put a stop to that practice because it really wasn't a positive practice. You really, in our minds as educators, the best education for their, for students is to go to school with the students that they live around. And, and not kind of jettison all, all across the district. There might be unique reasons that we would move a student. There might be a programmatic need. That we would move a student to another building. We certainly, the other task challenge that we have when we alter. Or change or go in a different direction is when we have overflow classes. And I'm sure all of you are familiar with that language is if a first grade class fills up at Maple Dale. Instead of hiring another teacher and then breaking up the class and lowering the numbers for every class. If there's available seats at Blue Ash, then we make them or have them go to Blue Ash for the year and then try to bring them back the next year. But it's a, it's a complicated matrix at times, but you know, we do our best to always accommodate our families. But late enrollees usually create some of that overflow situation. So, great question. Thank you, Dr. Seeger. Preschool. I'm looking at my preschool team. Team of one right now.
Good evening. So today we're just kind of recapping the changes that we've been able to. Bring to Mr. Lewis and the team, just what we're looking forward to for next school year. Just a review of where we are this year. We have the four classrooms with the eight sections, two at Blue Ash. And two are at Maple Dale. Currently we have six integrated classroom sections. And those classrooms have to be fifty percent students with disability. And fifty percent typically developing students. And two general education settings, which has fifty-one percent or more of typically developing students. So that's kind of the breakdown of what we currently are offering. And what those ratios have to be that we must stay in for our current students. One of the preschool revised rules for July has made that's more strict. Then has been in the past where they, we strictly have to be at that fifty-fifty every single day. In preschool. So that has been one change that has come about for preschool. Is that we have to consistently maintain that fifty percent. Usually we had to get to fifty-fifty in a reasonable amount of time with that classroom. But that is one of the changes that we are addressing as part of our changes. The other issue that we are changing as part of the preschool rule revisions is that continuum of service. We are required as a district to have a full continuum of services, meaning that we're serving from typically developing. Students all the way to our students with most intense needs and have different offerings and service levels for those various students. So we are building that continuum within our own school district. So that we are able to service our students in-house, based on their various disabilities. There's been an increased emphasis on that supervision for the preschool rules for our teachers and staff. And how we staff that and what those qualifications are. So those pieces we are also looking to address as well. And then just maintaining that licensure. So there's been a lot of changes and a lot of emphasis on that work this year. To make sure that we are in compliance this year and into next year. So next year with our expansion, we will have six preschool classrooms. So that'll be a total of twelve sections. So that is exciting for us. At Blue Ash will maintain the two classrooms that we have. One of those classrooms is gen- general education. Meaning that fifty-one percent or more is typically developing with students with disabilities. And we will have one classroom that is integrated. That's that fifty-fifty model. And each of those classrooms have two sections each. Here at Sims, we'll be moving the two classes that are currently housed at Maple Dale into this building, plus adding two. And that's where our increase is coming. So we'll have a total of four general education classrooms here. We'll have two sections of the integrated and then two sections of the specialized classroom for our students with most intense needs. So the impact to staffing is we'll be adding three preschool teachers. To meet the requirements of licensure and ratios. And then we'll have to add some additional educational assistance to comply with those ratios as well. So that is the work that we have proposed in our planning for next school year.
Could you give me an idea how many more students will be able to serve next year with this model versus?
Yeah, if we are able to get full, we, it will be around plus fifty students. And you know, and again, that will increase over the school year because remember those integrated, we have to stay fifty-fifty. So if those classrooms start with a lower number of special students with disabilities, we have to cap it at that same number for our typical kids. And then as the year, because it's rolling evaluations and identification for our students with disabilities. So as those students get added throughout the year, we'll bring in more typically developing students. But yes, we'll be at plus fifty once we're full.
Great, thank you. Anything else from the board? As always, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
To see you at our board meetings.
Thank you, Mrs. Belfour.
Moving on, it's item number six, the twenty-three, twenty-four. It's still hard to say, twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar.
Thank you, folks. So we are bringing just a drafty draft, seeking feedback, obviously. We've got some time. We want to make sure that we're doing this right, but I wanted to share with you just some of the considerations. That we looked at when we were putting this counter together. So the first was the number of instructional days for our students. We know that, you know, how important that is. And so looking at historically, over the past four years, we have ranged. From a hundred seventy-three to a hundred seventy-six instructional days for our students. Which also puts us in a range of twenty to twenty-two-ish over the state minimum. And so this is, that was, that was the first thing to make sure that we're being consistent with that, that range, if you will, for instructional days for our students. Second consideration, clearly, you know, our number of days for our teachers on their teacher contract, clearly. The other piece for this particular year, much like next year, is the construction timeline. So Mr. Lovell and I, looking at, knowing that in the, the fall of twenty-twenty-three. We most likely will need a later start again to make sure with that construction timeline. That's one of those pieces that at this point in time, we don't have hard and fast numbers from our construction crews. And so we hope to get more of that information over the next few weeks. But looking at, starting with a later start in August for this particular fall of twenty-three, based on construction. And then the other piece was the placement of our professional learning days. So much like this upcoming year. During this year, we will be in year two of our curriculum review work, substantial amount of work. So as, as Mrs. Tompkins and I have talked about what this looks like laying over the course of not only next year. But the year after, and really it's a three to five year plan that we're in the process of putting together. There is going to be a significant amount of work done with teacher teams on curriculum. So it could be curriculum maps, could be instructional frameworks, it could be resources, it could be whatever. And that's going to happen throughout the year. And there's going to be a cadence of communication and feedback with our teacher teams. That are working on that, but then bringing that back to their buildings and, and doing some just in time professional learning. But our thought was, if we have two professional learning days at the end of this year, twenty-three, twenty-four. That gives us a prime opportunity to shore up all of our expertise for our teachers. On anything that has changed from a curriculum map, a resource, instructional framework, whatever. So that they then are ready to hit the ground running in the fall. Teachers work over the summer. I know some folks think that teachers don't work over the summer, but we know that they do. And our teachers like to know far in advance what's coming our way. So the thought was, we have those days at the end that we can have a captive audience, set them up for success. To do any type of digging in that they might need to do over the summer. So they're ready to hit the ground running in the fall. And we do have those two other professional learning days in November as well as kind of a midpoint check, if you will. To have that opportunity for some professional learning. So those were the, those were the pieces that we were really looking at in terms of the, the considerations. And so we're, we're happy to have feedback from, from the board on, on some of those pieces.
Okay, I have a couple of things. You've seen this in email before, so this probably isn't going to be a surprise, what I'm going to say. So the two days at the end of the year, as a, as a teacher, your classrooms packed up, you're out of there mentally. You don't want to be there anymore. So I would suggest maybe changing that up a little bit. And don't, do not put those after the last day of school with the kids, because like I said, the classrooms are gone. Like the teachers are just ready for a break. So maybe moving those throughout the school year differently. So there's more professional learning days in the school year scattered about. So teachers have more time to meet, have more guided professional development. And they can work together. Perhaps putting them after, like the Monday after a break would be good also. So then elementary school teachers could then have time to break down their classrooms and rebuild them on that Monday, you know. And then also have a guided professional development, meet with teams, meet, you know, with the grade above, however we wanted to. Structure that, that's not up to me, that's up to everyone else. And I honestly.
And to that point, Dr. Seeger, in a regular year, I agree with you a hundred percent. But yeah, spreading out those professional learning days makes, makes a whole lot of sense. Our thought was this gives us a captive audience to set folks up for success in the fall. But again, we're.
I don't think teachers are captive the day after school.
My concern is if you, if, I, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Seeger, and I'm not an education specialist. But if you do that, you're taking away instructional days. And we're already at the low end of, of what Sycamore typically has had over the last three at a hundred and seventy-three instructional days. So to sprinkle those days throughout the year, you're taking away two more instructional days and, and I have a problem with that. So this is my personal opinion.
I also would like to say too, that I, I think that there's probably a wide variety of opinions. Among our teachers about where the best placement is for professional days. So I, I don't want to say that that's a given, that every teacher in our district agrees that those last two days in May would be a bad idea. But agreeing with Mr. Ballant, I, I'm not interested in taking away any days from student learning. And, and I mean, moving those.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a, a quick question. So, so that you don't have to lose instructional days, is it possible? Is there a reason why you have to cut off at that time in May? I know we used to in the past go into, into June, like the first few days of June. Is there a reason why we? Is there some construction reason why we couldn't add those two days at the end?
There isn't. We just already have a hundred eighty-five days for the teachers.
Oh, so you're saying if we, if we gave two days off in like one in February and one in March. And then add two days at the end, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be something we would want to do. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think about what, what Mr. Ballant is saying and what Dr. Seeger is saying. To see is there a middle ground between the two that could be a compromise? And I don't know, maybe teachers don't want that to happen.
The same thing you just said about teachers being done. And I would tend to believe that our professionals step up and do the work. Even if they're tired and they don't want to, adding a Monday and a Tuesday or pouring it into the next week. I don't know what the value of those two instructional days would be versus a day in February and a day in the fall. Just tagging them on at the end to accomplish that goal. I have two young men that they're done by that point. They're not going to add any additional value to their education.
Can you refresh my memory of contract at staff days?
One eighty-five.
One eighty-five.
Right.
That is by contract with, with our teachers.
Right. So if we, so if.
This is why I'm asking.
Right, yeah. So if we had, if we added those two days on, then there would have to be two days where teachers were not reporting to work. Does that make sense, Mrs. Bitter? Yeah, yeah.
And I have one more thing here from parents that I've heard. This is not me here. This is, other parents have been complaining to me about this one and I understand what they're saying. There is a desire to possibly go back to the full two weeks off for the winter break that I've heard. And the way I can see that on this calendar, the only way I can see that is if you would have to go to school on the twenty-second. And then return on, what is that?
And, and we desire the same thing, but.
But I'm like, yes, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just sharing with you.
What I, I think what's getting us, you know, off track is that, again, we, we have major construction going on in our district. That normally we would start in the middle of August. We can't do that. We're going to be tearing down a nineteen twenty-three junior high school that is two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. And we have to put in a parking lot. And we looked at calendars previously of how do we try? Could we do the junior high on a different schedule than everybody else? And I think we've unfortunately vetted all of this to see that the best thing we can do is start later, squish the calendar. Give up some of those perks that we've had in the past to be able to complete the construction appropriately. And that is through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Mr. Lovell can only guarantee that we're supposed to end in twenty-three. There is no way that junior high is going to be torn down by the start of school twenty-three. So we're going to be constantly dealing with the disruption through this calendar. So as much as I understand, I would love to restore two weeks at winter break. I would love to have some of the things that we have had in the past. That's not going to happen until the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar.
And I would add, I, you know, I've heard similar, Dr. Seeger, but I've also heard the flip side of. Parents who go back to work on the second or third that don't have, don't want to take vacation the first week of school to, to stay home with their kids. So there are two, there are two, there's two, there's two thought patterns there as well. I have a question around spring break.
Sure.
To me, it seems odd to go on spring break and come back and have a four-day week. Was there any thought of pushing? I, I, I understand it's around the quarters. I, I get the math on the quarters. Is there any thought on pushing spring break back to the week of the twenty-fifth? And you either push the, the extra day into, to Monday of the following week, or you gain an instructional day by not having that first Friday off after spring break.
Well, and that's spring vacation day. I don't know that it's so much related to the quarters. As it's typically been, I think, Good Friday for Easter weekend, which. For me, that's just problematic why we're giving that Friday off anyway.
Sure.
I mean, if we're, if that's why we're doing it, because that's been the tradition, let's call it what it is.
Yeah.
So is that necessary? Or could we possibly take that, the twenty-ninth and move that to the twenty-first of December? I mean, I don't know.
We, we have collective bargaining agreements to call out that Friday as a holiday. So.
All right, well, then that's a moot point then. Okay.
I have a very. Definitely take a look at that spring bake, break, spring break piece.
And I understand the educational of ending a quarter. I, I get that part of it. And maybe that's from a teacher's standpoint.
Well, and that, but yeah, that was the purpose at the end of the quarter, having that break, but we might be able to shift.
Yeah, but if you, sorry, I know, Mr. Comaford, you've been waiting so patiently, but just to finish this.
He has been.
Could we move, for what, Mr. Ballant, were you saying to just move the whole spring break from the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth and start at the? Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks. Bye.
Thanks, bye, she says. Mr. Comaford.
I have the simplest of questions.
Oh, the simplest of questions.
The text on the left-hand side says winter break is from twelve twenty-one to twelve twenty-nine. And in the calendar, twelve twenty-one is not highlighted as a no school day. And so one of them I think needs corrected.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that.
And which one is it?
I'm going to have to go back and look.
I, I, I recall, because I was the one that had her take it out. It's twenty-two. Because we needed an additional day for another day off.
So it, so it should say on the left, twelve twenty-two to twelve twenty-nine is winter break.
Thank you, Mr. Comaford.
And I just want to make the point also that for students, when you guys are, when everyone here is mentioning time in school, kids also need a break from school. So having a day off for professional learning for the teachers would help students in a lot of ways. I've been hearing from students who are stressed out about AP exams, about taking the ACT. I think just keep that in mind also. It's not just teachers on task. It's students who also need a mental break sometimes in a professional learning day. If parents know about it a year ahead of time, can work out a schedule for that.
That's a great point. Thank you.
I think it's important for our community to realize, based on your comments, we have added two additional days by the approval of this board to have collaboration days for our staff. We did hear from our staff that they would like those separated. But again, the challenges of this calendar, still with construction, are not gonna allow us to do that just yet, but we did keep the two collaboration days. You'll notice that they may not get two weeks at winter break, the students, but they're getting a full week at Thanksgiving. So again, we're doing our best we can with the calendar that we have. And I, I really want to impress on the community, be patient with us. We have one more year. I'll say one more year, because we're talking about the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. But the next schools, two school years are still impacted by our major construction project. We are not going to rush it because the impact and the dedication of this community to give us those precious tax dollars to build these buildings, we're not gonna rush it just because it's inconveniencing people for a couple of years. We really have to make sure we get through these couple of instructional calendars, still preserving what we believe is the appropriate instructional days and hours to be able to get those things accomplished. So as much as I understand the impact and the negative impact that people are feeling, or maybe just the pain points, we've got to get through this twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. And we certainly appreciate the suggestions, because it will improve the calendar. And that's why we want to have these conversations. And now that we've had the discussion with you, we will be able to present to our parent groups, because a couple of the parent groups pointed out issues with the calendars last time and made it better.
It did, I agree.
We can always-
I have one last quick question. Student personal learning days, do they count as instructional days?
So we, we did some research into that, so we will be providing instruction on that. But from a O D E, can I put it in EMIS as an instructional day? You cannot put it in unless it's being caused by construction issues or things of that nature.
And construction issues that kind of come up, so not, not like what we have. Like if there, like there's a water main break or something like that, right?
So are those days still counted in the one seventy-three?
We are counting them in our one seventy-three, because we are providing instruction. The state would not recognize them as instructional days.
And I'd just like to thank the board for your feedback on this as we look to, you know, make this as best as we can for our community, knowing that we've got constraints, but I just really appreciate the feedback.
Thank you for your patience with us as we are learning this process as well, a couple of us. Thank you.
I'm learning a lot too, Mrs. Bitter.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, Mr. Lovell, I believe, is up for master facility plan update. Always an exciting time.
Good evening, members of the board. The time is not lost on me, so I'm going to keep this brief this evening. Couple of things, if you want to move to the next slide here. A couple of things to mention, though, is that we did have an open house here this evening at Sims. So I think it's important to call out, as we did earlier, that it was fun being able to invite the community into a, what I would say ninety-five percent finished product here. We do have the finished renovation of the gym to happen, but it was good seeing our folks around. I, I put together this slide because I wanted just to try to capture all the projects kind of in one overall view for the board. I was able to present this with the Business Advisory Committee this morning, so I wanted to put it in front of you all. I'm not going to walk through all of this with you this evening. But I will call out that I did do a video with the help of our Community Relations Director, Ms. Bondbright. And it's on the website. It's about a five-minute video, just really covering all of these projects a little bit more in depth. So I invite our community, members of the board, others, to kind of watch that video to see some of the latest updates. We're going to do those periodically as well. It's just a great way to get out there, in addition to our lunch and learns that we'll be having here as well. But to kind of give you the overview, what I wanted to do is just capture some of the estimated completion dates. Again, I like to use the word estimated. At this time, again, we remain on time and on budget. But we continue to manage some of those tensions that exist with individual projects and the budgets and things like that. The main thing I do want to point out, because I think it's exciting to be able to talk about, because we've had so many conversations, is the fact that we are going to be moving dirt at the high school in the next few days. Yeah, so if you've been out there, you will see that they've started to do some of the demolition, clearing some of the brush, things like that. Earth movers are going to be out there, starting to kind of look at the parking area on that side, but also starting to grade some of the areas south of the highway there as well. We're making some adjustments to the modeling, but that's not really going to hold up any of the site development at this point. So that's really exciting to see that progress, so we can get that done for this fall. And then the last thing I'd want to point out as well is that we had the opportunity on Monday to take our district leadership team, our flight team, and do a tour of both EH Green and the junior high. And so I'm hoping that there was excitement. I think we learned a lesson on what type of shoes to wear in a construction site, but that's for another conversation, another point. But it was really exciting to be able to walk through those buildings and really stand in the midst of these extended learning spaces in the classroom, seeing the media center, seeing it how they match up with the visuals and what we're doing with some of the furniture selections. So we're going to start ramping up, especially with Green, tours by the community, or I'm sorry, not the community just yet, tours with our teachers, so that they can start visualizing those spaces. And again, plan for next year how they want to utilize some of those extended learning spaces and the benefits of the new building. So again, love for you to check out the video online. It's on Twitter. It's out there. So I think it'll give you a good overview of the entire project.
And I know you mentioned it, but we do have lunch and learns coming up.
We do, and I wish I had those dates in front of me, but I don't, so.
On the district's more as they go out?
They, they are, yes. Ms. Bondbright will make sure that those get pushed out, both in the newsletter, but they'll also be on social media. We started doing those lunch and learns, and we found that that is a phenomenal way to capture a wider audience. People can tune in during their lunch period or wherever that may be, and so we're gonna continue with those. And actually ramp them up as we get closer to opening Green and then looking at the junior high as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Lovell. I like seeing all of them on one slide.
Yeah. You're welcome. And I will actually send this to you all via email so that you have it. Just as long as we all agree that all that information up there could change at any moment. I feel like there should be a notation at the bottom.
It's in writing, Mr. Lovell.
It's a public record, right, at this point, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lovell. Impressive. Moving on, I need a motion for the change order for EH Green Intermediate Construction Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
And Dr. Steger?
Aye.
He passes. I need a motion for the change order for Sycamore High School Renovation Project, GMP number two.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for the agreement of special detailing and maintenance services with the City of Montgomery.
So moved.
Second.
Just, it's just a normal contract that we have at the City of Montgomery for when we need coverage at games and things of that nature, special duty details.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant?
Aye. Motion passes. I need a motion for job descriptions revisions.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Davis, do you want to cover these job description revisions, or would you prefer that I do it?
I would prefer Dr. Davis does.
There you go.
Hello again. Um, one moment. The two revisions are the preschool teacher for our integrated programming that Ms. Bell from just discussed, and then the coordinator of pupil support services. With the coordinator of pupil support services, similarly to the job description we presented for the coordinator of student services, changing the titles, making sure they were consistent across the district. So supervisors are our teachers on special assignment, coordinators are our administrators, and then aligning that work to be more reflective of the work that she's actually performed.
Any questions for Dr. Davis? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for job description new.
So moved.
Second.
In regard to the new job descriptions, although these, all of these positions are currently positions that we have in the district some kind of way, they were not approved by the board. And so we are presenting these job descriptions for the people that we already have. And in order for me to be able to post positions, because as again, Ms. Bell from assured, we have several preschool positions that I need to get posted yesterday. But because we didn't have the job descriptions approved, I needed to present them to you, so.
Well, thank you, Dr. Davis, for cleaning the house. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
And Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Davis. I need a motion for the approval of the contract with Judith Hughes, psychologist.
So moved.
Second.
You can see clearly written there that it's just for educational services for students with disabilities per his or her IEP.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber?
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the contract with Garland BBS Incorporated Sims Roof Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
I believe this is the final scheduled phase of roofing here at Sims Elementary to finish off the elementary school.
Are we, with this change, Mr. Lovell, are we still within budget? Thank you. Oh, capital improvement, sorry. Oh, this is capital, this is part of the capital budget.
That's great. It's funded from capital improvement.
Sorry, that was my mistake.
Budget that we reviewed at, at the last morning.
Thank you very much. Sorry.
Maybe the, the relevant question is, does this change our capital plan that was, has been shared in the past?
No, this was, I think this has been included in our budget for quite a while, hasn't it, Mr. Lewis?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We did not vote yet, right?
No.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
And Mr. Ballant?
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Lewis, other?
Just in the essence of time, I, I, but I don't want to leave these fantastic students out from getting their recognition that they so deserve. So just, and you saw a couple of them up there on the slide that Peyton Hines was the winner of the Overture Award for Theater. You know, just a phenomenal vocalist and just, you know, actor. Being a participant in the show, she was one of the most kindest, warm, welcoming people I've ever met. And just always made everybody, I think, energetic backstage, so. And then Claire Dillon was a theater finalist as well. We had a teacher, Mrs. Beth LeBlanc, which was, she was Arts Educator of the Year for Creative Writing Instruction, which was part of that process as well. And then Dia Prakash was a finalist in creative writing for the third year in a row. So again, pretty impressive young people at our high school. And then Eugene Harney, Gene the Machine, third-place state finisher. He's only a sophomore.
Wow.
So congratulations to Coach Pletz and the staff. He is a two-time state placer, and he's a district champ as a sophomore. So I see a state title in our future. And Gene is, Eugene is just a tough kid on, on the mat. And he obviously, he's on the football field as well. So just great to see our students performing well in the classroom, but also outside the classroom. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I need a motion for the approval of the treasurer's consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Just a couple of notes. One of the things that I wanted to point out was the scholarship fund donation. We had a, a community member a few years ago that made nearly a three hundred thousand dollar contribution as part of her, of her will to provide ongoing scholarships to students here in, in our district. So this is, I believe, the second year we've actually made this, we're actually gonna make these awards at the senior awards night. But, you know, wonderful testament to someone who just really cared about the students in our community, even though she did not have children of her own that she put through our schools. The other items I just wanted to point out quickly are that we have approved some additions to our appropriations. Those are primarily around having those contracts approved for the multi-use stadium as well as for parking. So you see some rather large adjustments to our appropriation measure for those two items. This is also the time of year that we receive our final allocation from the state to be used for our auxiliary services programs that support Moeller, Ursine, and the Blue Ash Educational Building. So we've added a little over six hundred thousand dollars to our budget, which is about half, I think, of their annual amount that they receive from the state to support things like instructional materials, services, and things such as that. We do work with those schools to help administer those, those funds on behalf of those private schools. Any questions?
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
And Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Motion passes. Need a motion for the approval of the financial report, February twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
On the financial report, I think the biggest thing that I want to point out is that we are really doing well in our property tax collections for the year. You know, given all the uncertainty in the economy, it wasn't necessarily clear that we would continue to see those collections come in as anticipated. So we're doing well through the end of February to be at the level that we are. We are also seeing a little bit of an uptick in our expenses and operations. At this point in the year, we try to stay within that two and a half percent expenditure trend. We're a bit above that at this point in time, so we'll continue to monitor that through the remainder of the year. We saw, you know, big expenses this month in our, our purchase service area. And I think that's kind of a timing issue that's, that's impacting part of that. So more updates as we go, as we continue to monitor our expenses through the remainder of, of this fiscal year. Any question?
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Please call the roll.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda, which includes addendum one E, two H I J, three B, and five A.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Comaford?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
And Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Ballant, before we move on to other board business, Mr. Ray, could you move back one slide? I forgot in my other to highlight these fantastic young ladies from Blue Ash Elementary, Evelyn Ackerman, Caitlin Daring, Sammy Morrow, and Siona Fish. So their wonderful teacher, Mrs. Colty, challenged them to really come up with a project that, you know, they could show, and she, they could experience how social media and how hard or how easy it is to impact so many with the use of social media and how to get a video out there. And actually, Mrs. Bondbright connected with the young ladies, kind of showed them the ins and outs of doing this. And so they went on a, kind of a task to try to bring Bengals to their school. So they put out a video, if you haven't seen it, it's- So they put out a video. If you haven't seen it, it's on social media. It's fantastic. But they were successful. They will be having a visit from Joe Mixon. So they called out numerous Bengals, but Joe Mixon is going to be coming and visiting with them. And they announced that right before spring break that they were successful. So congratulations to those four young ladies and to their teacher, Mrs. Coldy, for just, you know, making an impact and showing that you can make an impact if you ask for something. So they did it in the right way. So just wanted to highlight those four young ladies. So thanks for your indulgence.
Yep, thank you. Now moving on to other Board of Education Business Legislative Liaison Report.
Yes. Okay, here we go. And Mrs. Webber, I appreciate it if you want to add anything at the end, but I'll try my best.
I, I don't have any updates from legislative perspective, but I think we do have all of our remaining legislators scheduled to visit.
We do.
In the next few weeks. So that should be exciting.
Don't worry, Mr. Ballant. It looks like a lot of pages. I just have to put in a large font so I can read it at 10 o'clock at, oh no, 9:15 at night. All right. Just a couple of things. House Bill 126, which if you recall is the process for local governments to contest property value through the existing Board of Revision System. The Senate accepted a motion without objection to insist on its amendments to House Bill 126 and requested a conference committee. The House and Senate will now appoint members to the conference committee. H. Bill 322, this is regarding the teaching of certain current events, race and sex. It's still in committee hearings. House Bill 51, which as you recall, part of this bill had to do with the Open Meetings Act because of COVID and being able to attend virtually. That was signed by Governor Dewine into law on February 17th and went into effect immediately. Senate Bill 181 was also, Governor Dewine signed that into, that bill into law as well. And this established restrictions on policies that prevent students from wearing religious apparel when competing or participating in interscholastic athletics or extracurricular activities. House Bill 583, this is the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. And this committee held a second hearing on this House bill, which would require the State Board of Education to issue a temporary short-term substitute teaching license to approved applicants who will teach five or fewer consecutive days in the same classroom. This bill also would require the State Board to issue a temporary substitute teaching license to an approved applicant who will teach six or more consecutive days in the same classroom if certain requirements are met and allow a student teacher to work as a substitute teacher for up to five days. Testimony was provided by OSBA, BASA, OAESA, OASSA, and the Alliance for High Quality Education, of which we are a member. The State Board of Education unanimously approved the State Report Card Administrative Rules after accept, after accepting some technical amendments. Mr. Lewis, Mrs. Webber and myself met with Senator Wilson on February 24th. It was a good meeting. We discussed our district's response to the pandemic and received praise from Senator Wilson and how we were able to provide educational services throughout the two years. We discussed Estor Funds and continuing to fill any educational gaps that may have been caused by the pandemic. We briefly discussed the fact that redistricting has not been approved by the Supreme Court. Senator Wilson was not sure if he would still be our senator when all of that is finally completed. And I think we're still waiting. I think March 28th is the day for that vote. As Mrs. Webber said, we have meetings scheduled March 31st with Representative Miranda, April 1st with Representative Brinkman, and April 14th with Senator Blessing. So I think a couple of those, Mrs. Webber, we're doing virtually, or one of them at least, but hopefully.
We do have a few that are virtual.
Yeah. And if there's anything that the board would like us to bring up with those representatives or senators, please let me know. Thank you so much. That's all I have. Anything else?
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Commerfer's, yeah, Mr. Commerfer's Sycamore Advisory Committee Report.
So we had our monthly meeting on March 7th. And you heard one of the presentations already earlier in this meeting on the Alumni Coordinator Position for Sycamore Community Schools. We actually had a second presentation on the same night. And this was on preserving the history of the Edwin Green and Sycamore Junior High School. So the steps that we're taking to make sure that the artifacts and the, the pieces that would be remembrances of those schools were captured appropriately. And it was a really nice presentation as the Sycamore Advisory Commission Presentations always are. And they focused on, there was already quite a bit of work. So there was kind of a coordinating effort. I do believe that the junior high is learning from the green process and it was well received as well. So that's all I have to say from the Advisory Commission. We have another topic.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Commerfer for letting me not participate that night as I was out for personal reasons. So thank you. I appreciate it. It was nice to see the presentation tonight.
You're quite welcome and I hope your foot heals soon.
Mr. Commerfer, can you share that second presentation with the rest of the board?
I will, once I have it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Mrs. Weiss, student achievement liaison.
Here we go. On February 23rd, Dr. Steger and myself had the opportunity to spend time at Blue Ash Elementary. Many thanks to Principal Leslie Combs and Assistant Principal Jenny Amet for allowing us to come into their building to see the wonderful things our youngest aviators are learning, as well as to see the talented staff in action. I also appreciate our open and frank discussion built before and after our classroom visits. I would like to highlight a few things that we were able to observe. We visited our, the second grade classroom of Mrs. Sanders. Students were sharing math projects they worked on at home. One student, Julian, shared his observation of how much junk mail his family received over a set period of time. Not only did he count all the mail, but also thought it would be interesting to weigh it. The data, these data were put into a data collection sheet and then turned into line graphs and pie charts. And this is second grade. I mean, it was unbelievable. Another student, Adelaide, shared what she did in an assignment called Coin Creatures. She was asked to create different animals with coins, staying within the spending guidelines and coin number limit. She created both a cheetah and an octopus. We then visited, visited another second grade class, this time of Mrs. O'Conners. She shared the wonderful research project the class created called The Weather. Students researched different types of weather events and created an informative and creative PowerPoint presentation. Off to the first grade class of Mrs. Smiley, where we listened to students share their fiction stories. We heard amazing stories from Ava, Leah, and Langston. These first graders were learning about punctuation, capital letters, and writing neatly. Mrs. Smiley explained that even at this young age, it is important that students understand the goals that they are working toward achieving, as well as taking responsibility for their own learning. We then got to see Mrs. Santolin and fourth grade math. Personalized learning and stations played a big part in the subject area and grade level. The Go Mouth resource hits their curriculum well and is utilized effectively. We then went to observe a specials class called Community Connections with Mrs. McCarthy. Students are learning how to communicate effectively, share their feelings, show, show how to demonstrate empathy to one another and how to put yourself in someone else's shoes. Our last visit was to the Media Center with Mrs. Coldy. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Media Centers are not quite like the libraries that we grew up with in elementary school. They are very interactive, stimulating, and fun. The learning target for the day was prominently displayed and reviewed. The assignment was to find a person who is thought of as a noise maker and learn more about them. We ended our visit talking with Ms. Combs and Ms. Amet about some of the challenges faced this year by both students and staff. We talked about map assessments, air testing, and vertical articulation. We also discussed the value of staff collaboration days and the hope that those can be worked into the school calendar multiple times a year, which as we earlier discussed, they were. The atmosphere of Blue Ash Elementary is warm and inclusive with an emphasis on student learning and achievement. Dr. Steger, do you want to add anything to that?
For the time being almost 9:30, I'm going to say that was a great summary. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss.
There. One other thing I just wanted to mention, I had an opportunity to actually sort of do another student achievement thing, but it was very quickly planned. I had the opportunity to attend a screening of the film Cyrano with the high school AP French class and French 5 class. These classes are taught by Mrs. Leslie Chapman. Those classes read Cyrano de Bergerac by Edmund Rothstand in original French. They also watched a French film version of the play and then they capped it off by going to see Cyrano. It was really nice to see students getting out for a kind of a cultural field trip and practicing using their French skills. So a little highlight. So thank you, Mrs. Chapman, for letting me attend that. That's all I have for student achievement.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Weiss. I need a motion for the approval of changes to the Executive Advisory Council.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lewis, do you want to give a short description?
I'll just give you a very brief overview of just, this is another, Mrs. Weiss said a cleanup. You know, it's another cleanup item that, you know, I've been in the district 10 years. We've never had to go through this process of looking at our Business Advisory Council. Some of the Ohio Revised Code language didn't even get put in until 2017. I've been here since 2012 and we've had a Business Advisory Council that met quarterly. And really, I think Mr. Richter was a big portion of getting this going and really understanding the value of us connecting with our business community. So when we look at our Business Advisory Council, you know, it is a committee of the superintendent, but based on our board policy is actually a committee of the board. So obviously you charged me to carry out that duty in collaboration with the board president, who has always been in service on this, on this committee. So we actually had a meeting today, which was a fantastic meeting. It's a really good group of diverse thinkers that bring a lot of diversity and thought to our district. And you can see the list of individuals on that list. They, a lot of them are executives or people that work in different roles that again, bring that diversity and thought that we would not have to our district, from higher education to industry to private business, to private business ownership, to local government. It's well represented on our committee. We are required each year, I did it at the beginning of the year, never having done it. You know, there's kind of a template to fill out to send to the state of, you know, here's what your Business Advisory Committee is going to work on this year and certainly living through planning it for a year. And I will tell you that we really wanted to see our Business Advisory Council get even more, I would say, involved in some of the things that they could bring to us. And so we really worked with them to clarify their why. What is the purpose of the group? What are we trying to accomplish? And I would say, I told Mrs. Webber this afternoon, now after three meetings, I feel like I have a very clear direction on where we want to go with this group. The group developed kind of three bullets around what their purpose is. And I, I feel very strongly that we've been able to develop where we want to go and develop a path forward for the future of this group. So I will say my next report to the state on what are we doing and what are we working on will be much more clear than the generic one that you can pretty much just send in a generic template and it, I would say it basically accomplishes that task. So there's some Ohio Revised Code language talking about the Superintendent of Public Instruction and Consultation with the Governor's Executive Workforce Board. I will say that's all for Ohio Revised Code. I've never had any contact with anybody from the Governor's Office. The Superintendent of Public Instruction is the state superintendent that's supposed to set these guidelines. But I will tell you, they provide very little guidance to us on how this is supposed to be conducted. So we have done a great job of getting, again, a diverse group of thinkers in the room to give us that information. So I have filed all the proper paperwork. We do, you have the list of people that have been selected. Most of these individuals were not selected by me. They have been candidates and participants for a number of years. I have added a couple of different individuals for various reasons. And I discussed this, you know, this topic with our, our board president at the time, which was Mrs. Weiss of, I felt the need to add some additional people. And I still feel, based on talking to our committee today, the need to add some additional people to the list. And that's always a consultation that I'll have with the board president because I do feel strongly that it is important that we have a wide cross-section of our district represented on this committee. So what we believe as a committee that is missing, we're missing some industry. So we're going to be looking to add a couple of members. And as soon as I said that, or as soon as a couple of groups were talking about it, people started getting ready to fire off emails. So I do believe that we'll have some additional people that we will be adding to the group. The last thing, you know, I would just say that, again, this group had some things that we worked on in the past. But I would say that we're about to take a very clear direction on how their work, and they're very passionate about two things. Student internships and experiences. And then how do we bring that to fruition, but also how can they impact students? So that's kind of our next leap and our next step is being able to do that. So that is all I have for you about Business Advisory Councils tonight. Happy to answer any questions. But again, as a person that participated in it for 10 years and now leading it is very different. So.
Yeah, I can, I can add a few items. You know, I think this is one of those things that, as you mentioned, Mr. Richter brought this idea to us. I think it might have been as, as a result of the levy failure that we had back in 2003 and feeling after that point that it would be just a really good idea to get our business community involved to help us continue to monitor the things that we were doing and have an outside group be able to help us make sure that, that they were communicating, that we were doing a lot of things really the right way and seeking their advice on a number of things that impact how we, how we operate as a district. So that being said, when this all came about from the new state mandates back in, in 2017, and I, thinking back, I think there were some requirements to have a Business Advisory Council. But the new law came into play because a lot of districts really weren't doing it, you know? So I, I think the state legislature felt that it was important to make sure that there was a mechanism to make sure that districts were complying with this requirement. So I think the oversight happened in, from us as a district in really looking at it as a superintendent's committee as opposed to a board committee and that we felt like we were really doing a good job. You know, there aren't that many things that the state hands down that you just go, wow, we're already doing that. I don't think we need to do too much to make sure that we're, we're putting it into place in the correct way. So thinking about the, the changes that will occur by, by this is, number one, we're taking a couple of those steps tonight by renaming it. Having the board officially consider membership in this group. Because of some of the state compliance options, I bet, I keep minutes at every meeting anyway. And those are part of our continuing disclosure to the state of what work we're doing as a Business Advisory Council to see the activities and to make sure that we're meeting some of those standards that I believe were determined by the state superintendent and the governor. And there's kind of a checklist of things that they want these business advisory councils to, to address. Number one, looking at what are our workforce needs and how are we making sure that our students are getting, getting the support they need from our business community and that our curriculum supports their future. So again, I, I think that this is one of those things that because of the foresight of, of Mr. Richter, we have in a pretty good place in terms of the work. Now it's just kind of cleaning up the, the details to make sure that we're in compliance with our policy and also with state law. So.
Yeah, I would just add a couple of things, you know, just for context. As we discussed in January, with the roles of board members, this was listed as a responsibility for the president of the board to attend. So we will keep that up this year and we can have that discussion in, you know, January of next year, if we would like to continue that. And then this, this group does meet four times a year. So it is a quarterly group. And then following the meetings, we will have an update similar to SAC does on other Board of Education business to discuss meeting itself.
I have a couple of questions, just to follow up with what you just said, Mr. Ballant. These, because we're now getting into compliance with this state regulation, are we, these are open to the public, right? So these are open meetings. Is that right?
That's correct. Now, we'll have to be a meeting that has noticed both to the media and posted on our website.
Okay.
So that's the, the compliance with Ohio Meetings Law.
Okay.
And we'll post the, the minutes of meetings as well up to our website.
And then the other question I have is for Mr. Lewis. Thank you very much for covering most of the questions that I asked you in an email. But I have one follow-up question, just. But I have one follow-up question, just, and it doesn't have to be at this meeting. We can have this conversations can be ongoing, but just to get some examples of. You know, I know that, I know that the council has been operating a certain way for these years, and I understand that, and it's, it's, it's been doing really good work. But to follow through with what the Ohio revised code is saying. The real, you know, the, the mandatories, the musts are to really look at. If our district is creating relevant learning experiences for our students. That include work-based learning opportunities. I know you said something about internships, which is great. Um, but just understanding what kind of partnerships we're going to have going forward. Um, between our school and local industries, and as a board, I would really like to have. Some ability to give some feedback on what industries I think, I think all of us as board members should be able to give a few ideas. As well, and I would appreciate that opportunity.
And I would say just, you can just email those to me, and I'll, I'll bring them to the. Business group.
Just one last thing, just because I participated on it for a couple of years. I think the other thing that this group does really well is. They serve as ambassadors for our school district and the community, and that is just a very valuable thing for us to have. So.
Yeah, that was actually one of the, today, and, and again, I'll summarize this um, at our next meeting, because this was just this morning. Um, that, that was one of the three things, four things that we were talking about, the functions of the group, and it was to be ambassadors outreach um, to the community.
Yeah.
Because this is a, a different subset of people. Um, not, not all of them have kids in the district anymore. Um, and you're right, it's, it's a great function of the group to have ambassadors. Okay.
I just feel like I still need more information about this because this was just kind of dropped in our lap suddenly with the um. Changes in the policy. So I feel like I need to know a lot more about this, and if it's on Zoom, then theoretically, all of us could be on there if it's an open meeting. That's out there.
Um, I don't think you can because that would then be considered a board meeting, right?
Yeah, it is not a Zoom, it's not a Zoom meeting.
But it, but it isn't.
No, it's not as. It's not as zoom as in person, so you'll.
It'd be similar to SAC. That's not a Zoom meeting.
Okay, so there's.
Board members can't attend.
Going forward, there's going to be space for the public to come into those meetings, et cetera, and ask questions potentially. I'm just asking because this literally was just dropped on us like a couple of weeks ago.
Wait, what, what we'll do is we'll conduct them exactly the same way that we're doing SAC meetings. So it's really more. So we'll just follow that same process because they're really similar types of groups.
Any additional questions? Mrs. Weber, please call a roll.
I don't know that we had a motion.
We did.
Who was it? I'm sorry.
Did we have a motion?
Oh, wait, no, we did. Okay, I'm looking at the wrong one.
I'm sorry.
Okay, here we go.
One more quick question. When do the, so it says for the, it says for this school year. So when is the group selected for the next school year?
The members continue on, so.
But it would be brought to the board for a vote similar to SAC at the start of the next.
Correct.
And is there a limit to how many people can be on this committee?
Being that this has just been a new requirement that. I, I'm not aware of any limitations on number of people. I, I would say it would be based on. Uh, at least my hope would be the, the superintendent and the board president making that decision to collabor, collaboratively together.
I guess one question that, that I have, and this is something maybe we, we should consider, Mr. Lewis, is that. Uh, SAC, because they've been existence for so long, do have defined bylaws. So that may be something that, you know, potentially for next, next school year, that we might want to put in place for this group as well. Because I think that the, the requirements and the focus and the um, format of that would probably be fairly similar. So that, I think would be something we could.
It might be best for us to do a little research with other successful business advisory councils to see. You know, do they have these additional requirements?
Anything else from the board? Mrs. Weber?
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
And Dr. Steger?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the Sycamore Business Advisory Council Representatives.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional questions from the board?
I'm just, what, I guess I, I need to understand, was there a process by which these, everyone applied for this, or was everyone just appointed or asked to join? How does this work? I'm having, I'm uncomfortable.
Dr. Steger, it was, it was.
Oh, I'm, Mr., I'm just answering for you, Mr. Loos.
It was, um, the advisory committee has been established for a very long time. Most of these people have been on it for a very long time, and additional people have been added in the last six months. There is an application process. Like they do with SAC. It is not like that.
I think, Mr. Lewis, it was the, it was the. Um. The superintendent got to make those selections.
That's correct.
All right.
Okay, I also personally, I have a problem just okaying an entire slate of individuals rather than one by one hearing. What they're bringing when there are several, um, there's repetition in fields where people are working. That's one of my concerns.
So I guess I'm, I'm confused here. You're. You know, as with SAC, we don't, we can vote one by one. Um, I don't.
But there's an application process for SAC. There's not an application process for this.
The SAC is not the application, the people who are approved on SAC by the board, we don't go through the applications. We don't look at the applications. That's brought to us by. Um, the SAC group.
Okay, then we need to figure out who's going to be approving these things going forward because I don't, I'm not, I'm telling you, I'm just not comfortable voting for. An entire slate. I'm just being transparent here so you know how I feel.
And that's fair. Mrs. Weber, please call a roll.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bitter?
Aye.
And Dr. Steger?
No.
Motion passes. Um, we have item number six, policy project update.
Thank you, Mr. Ballant, for um, adding this through the um. Addendum this evening. Uh, just wanted to give you all an update. Mrs. Bitter, myself, and many members of the district office team. Have been reviewing the first draft of policy revisions over the last couple of months. Um, and I believe we're going to be complete with our first reading by the end of this week. So lots of good work, lots of Fridays um, spent doing this review. Um, through that process, we've uh, approved many of the revisions that have, or have sent forward to the next draft, many of the revisions that were. Uh, recommended by our policy consultant from the Ohio School Boards Association. There were also uh, policies that were identified by our group that needed some follow-up by a district team, just to make sure we clarified. Uh, if there was anything that was kind of, did not align with our operations and, and how we were actually implementing the policies. And then there were finally several policies that we felt uh, that we need more board follow-up on. It was something that we want to bring before the full board as opposed to Mrs. Bitter and myself. Um, and Mr. Lewis making those decisions uh, unilaterally. So. Good news is we're through the entire, almost through the entire policy manual. Um, I believe by the end of this month, our district office staff will complete their review of those things that require follow-up. Um, but the next step is that we need to make sure that the board has the opportunity to go through the policies that we've set aside. And then um, once we get all of that done, we'll have a, a second draft that will come to the board. Uh, Kenna Haycox, our consultant from OSBA, has requested a session with the entire board. And right now, we're looking at either probably the end of April or beginning of May to review that next. Draft and to really start putting into motion so that we can get uh, the entire policy manual approved midsummer so that we can make those updates to. Staff handbooks and student handbooks and things like that for next school year.
Mrs. Weber, sorry to interrupt, um, just a question. You're asking for an additional board meeting to do this?
I, I think that that would probably be the best way to go about this, is to have an additional board meeting. Um, Ms. Haycox is, is absolutely available to do that, you know, late afternoon or evening, so it would not, we would not be looking at a daytime meeting. We'd be looking at something that. By two to three hour session that we would just solely be focused on, on policy.
Um, I would just ask for as much advance notice as possible.
Right. So my hope is, is that if everyone feels okay with going forward that, with that plan, I'll have Carla start to reach out. To look at a couple of two to three hour blocks in late April, early May to take that next step. So if any of you know right offhand. That those, either of those two weeks are just out, um, please let us know.
Mrs. Weber, can we also have everything well in advance so that we don't have to sit there and read it as we're going through it so that the meeting can go as quickly as possible?
Absolutely, and one of the things that you'll find out is that um, Ms. Haycox has a website set up. So that all of you can have a, a basically access to those accounts, see all the revisions she's made. She has tracked every change that we have suggested or made on a spreadsheet that gives you a summary of everything. She's, she's great. She's a taskmaster. She's. You know, think about what we've accomplished in the last couple of months, and it's not because we're so great. It's because she's really good. Uh, but we, you know, everybody has put in a lot of time from the district level, so you'll have, you'll have time to, to do that review in advance.
Along those lines, I'd like to thank you, Mrs. Weber, you, Mrs. Bitter. And everyone in the district office who's been working on this. I, I know what the pile of work that we had on this policy audit was. From um, looking at that for the last two years. So much appreciation.
Yeah, Mr. Commerford, every new board member can eventually say that because they usually do policy. So it's great.
I'm just glad I wasn't, when it was my turn, that it wasn't an entire policy review. So thank you, Mrs. Bitter.
Well, you, you will get to review. Don't you worry. You're going to get plenty of time on this. Don't you worry.
Okay, um, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.